With our flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a quick note if our IT folks can give us our video of the meeting. There we go. Thank you very much. We were seeing something else on our happy little screens up here. We're getting our timed items ahead of time. It's all right. Works out. So we will proceed with the statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, August 24th, 2010. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Anne. All right, we'll move on to public comment. This is the time when members of the public may address the board on any item that is not on our agenda, understanding, of course, the board may not take action on any item raised under public comment. And ma'am, your name, if you...
You got it right down this time?
Good morning.
Gloria Stallman.
How are you?
Fine.
Good.
I live in Auburn. I retired from the Auditor Controller's Office in 1993. Supervisor Kirk Ulller was the guest speaker at the bi-monthly meeting last week of the local chapter of Retired Public Employees Association. We had a very good turnout and there were many comments and questions from Mr. Ulller. In my opinion, the most important comment and/or question was about those of us who retired before January 2007. We all have lower pensions, so when the county takes away some of the pension to cover the health care premium, it hurts, and now the county is contemplating taking more. It will be 20 percent of the health care premium, which in my case will be about $60 a month. My pension is considerably less than $1,000 a month. I will have to adjust my budget, and I do have a budget, but I think I can manage. I do, however, have to address the county's claim that the retirees' health care is a real problem. I think there's money available for the supervisor's $100,000 goodie fund, and the medical professionals that were recently hired were given large compensation packages. So I asked the county on behalf of the retirees from pre-2007 to show some compassion and please rethink the deduction of 20 percent of the health care premium from our pensions. I have comments from two other members of our group who couldn't be here today. This is from Phyllis Cox. I would like to thank Mr. Ulller for attending our meeting last week. I learned some things that I didn't know about, but he also said at one point that he did not think they would be able to keep the promise -- and she put that in caps -- that was made to us. I would like to know how can you break a promise that so many people are counting on as part of their retirement? These comments are from Linda Farley, the vice president of our local chapter. When we worked and our contracts were negotiated, we were asked to take better medical coverage in lieu of higher salaries. We did that because the county administration was trying to keep salaries down and pensions smaller. Now that we are retired, the medical benefits we were promised when we retired are being renegotiated, and we don't have a representative for retirees at the table. So we have less of a pension than we could have for taking the benefits instead of getting a larger salary, and we also are losing some of the health benefit we were promised. We retirees lose, and the county comes out ahead both ways. It just doesn't seem right. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to comment this morning?
I just want to say it's really hard for me to get up and down.
We have a microphone right here. Would you -- Holly, would you bring -- take the microphone to her?
It's right in front of Anne.
Yeah, it's right over here. No, right up here on the desk right there. Turn that on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, your name for the record, please.
My name is Erin Broaches.
All right.
And I live in Applegate. And I do want to...
Need you to speak into that microphone.
I do want to thank you again for coming to our meeting last week and giving us over an hour and -- it's about hour and 15 minutes of your time, and you answered a lot of our questions and gave us some insights. And even though we don't agree with everything that you've said, at least you were able to listen to our pleas, and I hope you were able to share them with the other board members. And I just wanted to tell you that our chapter here in Auburn, we have about 300 members, and I'm the membership chairman, and we're about 100 stronger than we were five years ago, and I plan on making it stronger. Also, there is a Roseville group, and I neglected to give them a call and see how many members they have, but I know that their concerns are as ours are, and I just beg you to listen to us and have some empathy, sympathy. Just help us, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else wish to address the board under public comment? Go ahead, step on up. And then, sir, I saw you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board under public comment? Okay? Yes, please.
Yeah, my name is Michael Patrick Murphy, and I live at 5617 Adobe Road in Rockland.
Bust some weight!
Thank you. Don't worry, though. I will find it again.
I didn't recognize you, Mike. You've lost -- you've lost some weight. You look good. Sorry, I didn't recognize you.
Now we'll start the clock.
Okay. Yeah, we'll start your clock over. We'll start your clock over.
All right. First off, I want to say that with a positive for Placer County, I want to say thank you. You guys have beaten LA. You're better than Los Angeles County. And now down to business. Recently, I had a roommate situation where later I discovered that it was on record that she was bipolar and suicidal, and when I tried to go through the Rockland Police Department to handle the situation, not only were the cars sent out from fire, from police, from ambulance five or six times, using up the county money and services, but county health and human services was absolutely useless after the hundreds of millions of dollars we spent on county health and human services. I was in shock and awe how inefficient and how inappropriate the whole system turned out to be. One of the last comments by the police department was, "The system is broken. There's nothing we can do about it. Health and human services is broken." And I suggest that if you have somebody that's a danger to the other people in your home, that you and the other people in the home leave the home to the individual. Now, they finally, after the sixth time, when they broke in the door and they found the gal with a butcher's knife beside her on the bed, decided they'd put her into 72-hour suicide watch, even though they had it on record that she had been in this situation twice before. Now, I can't believe that this actually happened in my county after all this money was spent, and I'd like to see something done about it. I'd like to see it fixed, even if it means you have to lobby the state to change some of those laws that may be causing the situation in the first place. I am in shock and awe at my county at this point in time, and I just wanted to go on record, please, that this is what I'm saying and how I feel about it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Murphy, have you had the opportunity to bring the details of this event to your supervisor's attention so that we might be able to figure out what happened with it?
I'll be happy to meet with them on it.
That'd be great. I'm sure whichever of these gentlemen represent you in Rockland, I'm sure they'd love to hear from you, to hear what your specific concerns are and maybe figure out where within the system something might have not worked.
Well, it's important to note there's an article in Sacramento, because Sacramento's going through the same problem, and the system is broken, and this all is landing on the private sector through the emergency rooms. That's where this is all taking place, and it's overcrowding them, and we need to do something about it, even from -- it's our county. Our people need to be safe.
I agree, and having the particulars will help us do something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Honorable board, my name is Jim Ricker. I'm from Dutch Flat. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm not doing this. I am the chairman of the Placer County Historical Organizations Committee, which is a standing committee of your historical advisory board, and we recently helped organize and completed the third annual Heritage Trail Museum, Placer County Museums tour, which had 19 museums involved from Roseville to Lake Tahoe. And for the third year in a row, we've been very successful. Our numbers are up. Budget seems to be good, so we're staying on budget. I can say for up in Dutch Flat, the Golden Rift Museum, our numbers, while for the specific event were a little down, over the whole year, were up, and I think that's indicative of the following we've gotten through this Heritage Trail, which is not just to get them out on the road for one weekend, but to visit all of our museums over the course of the year. And so I would like to thank all of the people involved, the major sponsors, our Placer County Board of Supervisors, thank you very much for your support, Sure West, Native Sons of the Golden West, and Capitol Public Radio. I'd also like to thank all the museums and organizations that were involved that made this such a success. I'd also like to thank the Placer County Public Information Office for all of the work they did on this event to promote it. We got a great -- I don't know if the article was that great, but it was a full-page article in the Sacramento Bee that brought a lot of people from Sacramento up here. And again, it's been -- it was a very successful event. I also like to thank and recognize the museum division for all their work for staff. In particular, I'd like to personally recognize Melanie Barton, your museums administrator. This is her baby. She thought it up. She works tirelessly on this, and it doesn't happen without her. And so we're planning on doing it again as long as the trajectory is way up, and look forward to next August doing another Heritage Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Good morning, Chairman Ulller and members of the board. I'm Angela Ponivas. I'm the executive director of Lighthouse Counseling and Family Resource Center in Lincoln, and I am here today to personally thank you for your most recent support of our signature fundraiser, the Celebrity Waiter Luncheon that was held in June. This is the fourth year in which the Board of Supervisors has supported our signature event, and we are very grateful. With your help, we raised more than double our gross earnings of last year and brought in $34,000 this year. We know this is quite an accomplishment during these challenging times, and we are humbled by your support and the support of all of our community leaders who joined together that afternoon to embrace our cause. In late June, we also hosted an open house and ribbon cutting in celebration of our new facilities. We had 150 people in attendance. Many of you supported us throughout the planning and tenant improvement process. Again, many thanks for your support. The new facility allows us to serve more people at a lower cost. Lastly, I would like to specifically acknowledge our appreciation of the ongoing service agreement that we enjoy with Placer County. Our partnership with the county enables us to deliver easily accessible and relevant health and wellness services directly to the Lincoln and Sheridan residents. In fiscal year 2009, 2010, the Lighthouse met the needs of more than 3,000 residents. We provided counseling and counseling referrals to almost 500 people, helping children, adults, families, and couples. We helped 1,273 people obtain basic needs such as food, clothing, transportation, housing, shelter, utilities, and more. And we helped 1,000 people obtain health care or health care insurance. These are just a few highlights of the work we do, and it is your support of our organization that makes this work possible. On behalf of the Lighthouse Board of Directors and the staff, I thank you for your generosity and for giving us -- I'm sorry, for joining us in creating a supportive, nurturing community for our residents to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert?
Angela and Jennifer. This is, just so you know, Jennifer's second year as chair of the Lighthouse Board, and you guys have just done a fabulous job of bringing this organization along, provides tremendous services that are sorely needed in the community of Lincoln in partnership with our Department of HHS, huge amplification of the value that can be created through all of that. So again, thanks to you, and it's our pleasure to work so hard at the Celebrity Waiter Lunch.
Thank you. Rocky?
The tips were very good, too.
You might want to clarify what that means.
Dollars that people gave us for the great service that we gave them.
Yes, but where did those dollars go?
All those dollars go back to the fund. We don't need them. Sorry for not being clear about that.
That's because we get paid so much.
Yeah, I was just going to say, just want to make sure folks understood we weren't augmenting our salaries.
Oh, right.
Any other comments? It is a wonderful event, and I think the fact that you were able to -- you're over your double your income from that one event, just phenomenal, not just testament to the work that you've -- that you put into the event, but also to the support base that you have built based on your good works and delivering service in the community. People see results, and they're willing to continue supporting organizations that deliver results, and your organization clearly does, and that's why folks who show up are willing to open up their wallets and provide additional cash above and beyond what they pay just to sit down and eat, but the tips that then go into making that total as high as it was. So just, I think the community has spoken loudly and clearly that you guys are doing a great job and hope that you continue to keep up the good work. Thank you for that. Any other comments under public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on with our supervisor committee reports this morning. Board members have any committee activity to report since our meeting on Thursday of last week? Nobody had any supervisor meeting or committee meetings since Thursday. All right. Then let's move on to consent. Any board members have any items they'd like removed from consent for discussion? No, one second. Okay, any members of the public wish to address the board on any items that are on consent this morning? All right, seeing none. I'm sorry, sir, did you have a comment on something that's on our consent agenda?
Item six.
Item six? I don't believe it's on our consent agenda. No, item six is general discussion. That's regarding our purchasing policy manual? Yeah, that's regular department item. All right. Anything from consent? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve consent?
Make a motion.
All right. Supervisor Rockholm with the motion, Supervisor Montgomery with the second. Roll call, please.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Ulller?
Aye. All right, we will move on to department items. Our first timed item, not till 10 o'clock, so we will move on to department items with item number five, administrative services procurement regarding blanket purchase order for construction management services within public works.
Just keep going, we'll be done.
You want me to just do your whole report for you, don't you?
Good morning, Jim Bogan, purchasing manager. 5A is requesting your board's approval to renew six blanket purchase orders in the maximum amount of $225,000 each for construction management, construction inspection, and materials testing services needed by the Department of Public Works. These services are critical to the execution of public work projects throughout the county. These are the top rated firms for eastern or western Placer County on qualified list number 9867, which your board approved last year along with the original BPOs. Staff recommends your approval of the BPO renewals in the maximum aggregate amount of
Questions of staff on the renewal of six blanket purchase orders? No questions by board members? Any members of the public wish to address the board on this aisle? And seeing none, do we have a motion on the aisle? A motion, Rockholm, second by Wiegand, to approve item 5A, the renewal of six blanket purchase orders. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. Moving on to item six. 6A is purchasing policy manual. Adopted resolution, amend Placer County purchasing policy manual to add a provision prohibiting any requirement for project labor agreements on county public projects. Supervisor Rockholm, I believe brings this item forward.
Yes, I'll just make a few comments on why I think this is an important item to bring forward. While on the city council in Roseville, we got into a situation trying to build our power plant where we were basically, we called it green mail because it wasn't blackmail, we had to sign a project labor agreement to keep that project moving forward. Had we not signed that project labor agreement, we could have lost the ability to have that license from the state of California because it was on such a tight schedule. But this goes on all around the country, these project labor agreements. Not opposed to union members having work done with the county, but I think it has to be a fair bidding process and above board that they bid and, you know, all companies are open to the bidding, and that basically we have a policy prohibiting this action or the, you know, what goes on here. I'm going to turn it over to Allison Carlos, who's going to fill in a little bit more of the blanks. I would like to say that we do have a letter of support from the Rockland Area Chamber of Commerce, signed by Dave Butler, chairman of government relations, supporting our action, and the CEO of the Roseville Chamber is here also, Wendy Gary.
Well, I think Supervisor Rockholm did a very good job of explaining what the item is regarding. Basically, there are a number of jurisdictions around, certainly California, but in the country, that have, either by charter or by ordinance, have precluded or prohibited the project labor agreements, and while, of course, there are some opposing opinions about the value, I think that in general that the jurisdictions that have done this have concluded that there may be some savings by virtue of competitive bidding that could come out of that. So with that, if there are any other questions, I think Scott and I are here to assist in answering questions, but I'd leave it at that.
Okay. Supervisor Holmes?
This action doesn't preclude companies that have union employees from bidding on the projects.
No, it doesn't preclude that, and I would go further to say it doesn't even preclude your board from considering the use of a project labor agreement also in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Finley?
Well, I mean, yeah. It does preclude it.
Just to correct that, this would include a policy in your purchasing policy manual which would prohibit this board from including that as a requirement in one of the county's projects. Of course, you could change that policy in the future, but if you adopt this, it would preclude that in any future contract.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Do we have any documentation that shows that PLAs actually prohibit anyone from bidding?
We looked into what the value added from a numerical or quantitative standpoint would be, and we couldn't quite find the studies that would indicate there is a quantified amount of savings or competitive bidding that would occur. So I think the jurisdictions that have adopted it have basically wanted to make sure that they offered the opportunity for competitive bidding, including of labor unions.
Would allowing PLAs to remain on our -- in our quiver for review on a case-by-case basis change essentially what we're proposing here today except to remove the absolute prohibition?
I think it's purely a policy question on how the board would like to approach the issue, and I think that certainly while the county has never seen a project labor agreement come forward in Placer County, it would be, I think, a statement of intent for your board one way or another.
So if I understand what you just said, we haven't had a PLA in Placer County?
That's correct.
So we're acting to prohibit something that's never occurred?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Rockholm?
I'd just like to add that when we put a bid out, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, they're prevailing wage jobs, so any company could bid. I think the value of having the PLA in place sets a precedent where we're not going to partake in that argument or that discussion. Placer Vineyards has already been sued and at behalf by William Copper and his group that as soon as they start building in Placer Vineyards, he's going to go after a PLA for the construction of the power center. And so it's already here in Placer County, and this just eliminates the county from being in that discussion. Whatever a developer privately wants to do, they can do. Now, in Roseville, when they made that decision to go with that PLA, we excluded some very fine companies from being able to bid on that job by virtue of doing it. So I think this just levels the playing field, makes it fair.
Would you provide, just for perhaps the boards and maybe the public certification, examples of where project labor agreements, and maybe Scott may have this question for you, where are project labor agreements typically utilized? What -- and what is the net effect of having one versus not having one? And who seeks to have a project labor agreement put in place? What drives the addition of a project labor agreement within a project?
Well, a little background. A project labor agreement is usually utilized on large public works projects, and by large, it's, for example, a project labor agreement was used on the expansion of the San Francisco Airport when they undertook the expansion of the San Francisco Airport. One was used in Boston for the Big Dig, what was called the Big Dig, that multi-billion-dollar project there. So they're usually utilized in large public works projects, and they're usually utilized in the circumstances where you have a number of different contractors and a number of different trades involved in the large project that have to be coordinated. And the argument in support of the project labor agreements is it creates a situation where all of the parties going into the project have pre-bargained, if you will, the terms and conditions under which the employment would occur. The response to that, of course, is that the contractors who aren't able to enter into those kind of pre-hiring arrangements may be precluded from bidding on those projects. But generally, they are used in large public works projects. They've been used throughout the country in some places, and but within Placer County, of course, outside of the city of Roseville, they haven't been used, but that's the typical kind of example is a large project like that.
So in your explanation, you said that the labor component for larger projects is, I believe you used the word "pre-bargained"?
Correct. What a project labor agreement is, is it requires all of the contractors bidding on the project to have entered into labor agreements before they contract. So when they enter into the bidding, they have the labor agreements in place with all of the relevant contractors, subcontractors, and anybody who will be participating on the job.
And so if you're forced to agree to the pre-bargained labor rates, how are those rates established, and are those rates typically lower than or higher than market rates achieved under open bidding?
Well, I couldn't speak to the latter, but any project in California has to comply with prevailing wage rates.
Sure.
But in terms of the premium that might be obtained through a pre-hire agreement is one of those issues that people argue. So...
So if we already have a prevailing wage requirement, which, as we know, in Placer County, our prevailing wage is set by the average of wages in the San Francisco Bay area market, thereby necessitating in many instances that on our prevailing wage jobs, we're paying as much as 30 percent above market in our area on prevailing wage jobs. If there's already the prevailing wage component, what is the additional benefit of a project labor agreement? What benefit is derived by the taxpayers of Placer County or the city of Roseville, for instance, when the power plant was being built? We are talking about public dollars being delivered, being used to deliver a public good in the form of infrastructure or what have you, and therefore, what is the public benefit associated with the utilization of a project labor agreement? Is there greater level of service delivered?
The one major thing you obtain from a project labor agreement is essentially a no-strike agreement. So in other words, it is supposed to create labor parity on the job. And I know at least in the San Francisco expansion project that that was a major component of that, so that you eliminate potential delays from labor unrest during the project.
No-strike agreement, and a strike would be called?
Well, I would add, too, I think when the research, what we found is primarily, one found value in that no-strike, no-contest agreement. When you had multiple jurisdictions involved in a very large project or multiple entities involved in a very large project, more than... more than one entity.
Okay. I'm trying to figure out, for instance, on a public work, sewer line expansion, something, if a PLA is used, I'm confused as to why there would be a strike or...
Well, as Supervisors Rockholm indicated, there was an indication that there would be challenges to the project if a project labor agreement wasn't agreed to. The challenges to the project could delay it, it could affect the financing, it could affect the ability to proceed with the project.
Okay.
So by eliminating that unrest, you were able to proceed with the project, but under the conditions set under the project labor agreement.
Okay. And, 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 Council's over here tugging on my shoulder, so I'll give him a chance in one second. But just to finish on that thought, since we know that on these projects, for instance, the power plant expansion, there is a prevailing wage component, we know what the minimum threshold was set at, at prevailing wage. So one would have to assume that in exchange for a higher wage, that's when this agreement of either no-strike or no litigation or what have you is struck?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, Tony?
You know, as your board is aware, labor agreements tend to run for terms. And they could be one-year terms, two-years terms, four-years terms. And if you have a long-lasting project, one that could be anywhere from two, three, or five years out, and you have 15 trades, 16 trades on the job, the possibility that all those contract provisions have aligned perfectly for your time period is nil.
Right.
And so one of these things you can negotiate is, okay, the carpenters are only bound by their agreement for three more years, but this project's going to last five years. You buy some understanding with the carpenters for that. Whether that's good or bad, I think that that's the purpose on major projects. On smaller projects with one contractor, I don't think these things are used, but if they were, I couldn't quite figure out what the advantage would be.
Okay. Supervisor Rockholm, you're on first.
I just wanted to add that in Placer County at least, it's been my experience, these PLAs have been used to attack the environmental document, to hold up the project unless you sign these agreements with the labor unions. The disadvantage, I think, to the county and the disservice it does to our county, the people who want to work in our county, is that it precludes the non-union companies from even entering into the bid. And there are some good companies out there that choose not to be union, based on, you know, for whatever reason, their company works the way it does. I think this levels the playing field, and we just have an ordinance or whatever we're going to call this, that says we do not enter into PLAs, and we move forward.
Okay. Supervisor Montgomery?
I'd like to clarify, Chairman Euler used the term, used the word "forced." People are forced into these agreements. No one is forced to sign a PLA, is that correct?
If it is a condition of the public works contract, yes, they would be required to enter into one of those.
If they chose to do so, they are not forced to sign a contract?
If the county were to require that, they would be forced to, but the county is not required to put that in their contract.
Currently.
Currently.
PLAs, to my understanding, are often specifically tailored to an individual project. Is that correct?
As I said, they are typically utilized in large projects where there are a number of contractors, and as Tony indicated, it may go over a term of years.
Right, but what I'm saying is each PLA is different from every other PLA. The individual terms of a PLA are negotiated.
Correct. Each project has its own PLA.
Uh huh. One thing that was raised as an issue that is fairly consistent is that they do normally require contractors to hire workers through the union hall. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that would be a local union hall. So we could assume that those would be local workers, local employees who reside, work, play, own property in Placer County.
I honestly could not speak to that. I don't know what the hiring practice was, would be.
One of the issues that was raised in our packet here was that San Diego County has recently gone to this model that we're proposing today. I would like to point out that San Diego County has an estimated 200,000 undocumented workers who are laboring in the construction and related industries in San Diego County. One thing that PLAs very clearly achieve is making sure that we know where our workers are coming from, and that they are either U.S. citizens, or that they are here legally in our country because they're coming through local union halls. I think that's a huge benefit for us here at the county, to have that sort of certainty in terms of who we are hiring to do these jobs and where that money is going.
Thank you. If I use the word "forced" incorrectly in terms of the negotiation between a project applicant and the trades, then I will withdraw the word "forced" and substitute "coerced." Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about, if a prevailing, if a major project is funded by state and federal dollars, then prevailing wage has to be paid. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
So a major project, such as, and I'm going to risk raising a few eyebrows, sort of the Auburn Dam, for example. I didn't mean to.
That would be major.
I meant to raise some eyebrows. So the, obviously, those companies that are, have the ability to build a dam are probably going to be union people. But it doesn't stop local subcontractors to apply for those, some of that work. However, those subcontractors that aren't unionized will have to pay their employees prevailing wage.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, that's, I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by board members or comments? All right, we'll go ahead and open this up to the public. I suspect there might be one or two folks that wish to address the board on this item. Supervisor Holmes, please. Thank you. Good morning. And if you please, name and address, just for record purposes. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman and Board Members. Mike Berg, 296 Deer Street, Kings Beach. I'm a member of carpenters, Local 2035, and a representative of the union. Great questions, by the way. I'm not going to try to speak directly to many of them. I suspect others in the audience may have more expertise than I. I wanted to speak more from a personal perspective. One of the things that PLAs are proponents of is apprenticeship, and state-certified apprenticeship. And I'm a product of a state-certified apprenticeship. I've been a carpenter, a union carpenter, for 33 years. And in that length of time, I've been very fortunate and had very few periods of unemployment. I attribute that to the skills that I learned through a four-year apprenticeship training program. Apprenticeship allowed me to build a strong foundation on which to build my career. I've put two kids through college, property owner, taxpayer, and I've always had health care. If you look at the headline today on the Sacramento Bee, number of uninsured is going up. Unions always provide, that's one of their big concerns, is to provide health plans for our families. In addition to the actual skills that I learned as a carpenter, one of the biggest things I learned through apprenticeship was to have an open mind and to be adaptable, and to keep as many tools in my toolbox as possible. PLAs are not a one-size-fits-all agenda. They are individually negotiated, tailor-fit. If they, if they are appropriate, they're highly successful. I would say they've got an awesome track record of bringing projects in on time, under budget, or at budget, or ahead of schedule. I don't know how much research staff has done into their performance record, but I would say it's commendable. So my question is, why would we limit ourselves? Why would you tie your hands behind your back by eliminating a blanket policy to preclude one of your tools? You're, I mean, you're looking at an endangered species here. The American workers, middle class, our jobs are being shipped overseas left and right. And in closing, I'd just like to say, it's a tool. It's a tool you should retain. It's something that, as a wide steward of the, wise steward of the public trust, I would hope you'll reconsider, at least send back to staff for the study, and keep as many tools in your toolbox as you possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and for making the trip all the way down from Kings Beach in order to participate in this. Thank you for doing that. Yes, sir, please.
Hey, good morning, Supervisors. I want to thank you guys all for your service during these difficult times. But my name is Dan Curran. I live at 7217 Sierra View Place in Loomis, California. I too am a, I'm an operating engineer, member of Local 3. I'm a little concerned about the timing of this proposal. A lot of times, we see it as an attack on working families and working people in general. Our union does many, many project labor agreements, and we also do one-project agreements for any contractor that's willing to follow the basic rules that are set forth to do a one-job agreement with the union, and if they choose to go non-union again afterwards, but it ties them to the basic wage and fringe package that everyone has to pay. Everyone knows that, we just did a big, well, a big project out in Lincoln that was primarily done union. Several of those contractors out there were not generally union contractors, but had signed one-time agreements, and it emptied our halls, our local halls of workers. Local people were hired. You do away with a lot of these PLAs, an outside contractor could come in, bring a lot of people from outside. These do, PLAs do tend to protect local, local hire. I recently had, had a time to spend time with Kevin Johnson, the mayor of Sacramento. His father and my father were both union sheet metal workers. Nobody's getting rich doing these, this work, but they are being paid fair wages and fringes. And I'd like you guys to consider leaving the option of PLAs in your charter. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, just a question of counsel on that point. The, what we are considering, I don't know the particulars, what this gentleman was just describing in terms of Lincoln. What we are considering is prohibiting there being a requirement on a county job that the county would impose a PLA requirement, correct? But still between the parties actually constructing the work, should a PLA be arrived at, they can do that?
That's correct. There's, this does not inhibit private agreements.
So all we're saying is that the county will not, as a condition of a project, require a PLA, but should the union and a project developer get together and come up with a PLA, they're, they're fine, they can do that.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So we're not prohibiting these PLAs in Placer County. We're simply saying we will not, as the county, require it on our projects. We will not impose a requirement on our projects that we fund and administer.
Right. That was, that was my original point when we were discussing it, that we're not requiring it as a county only, but they still can occur.
Sure. Sure. We just won't make it a requirement what we do. Okay, thank you. Ms. Garrick?
Chairman Euler and members of the Board of Supervisors, Wendy Garrick here on behalf of the Roseville Chamber of Commerce. And as Supervisor Rockholm alluded to, when Roseville was building their power plant, the chamber did go on record back then opposed to project labor agreements because we think it takes the fairness out of the bidding project. And we don't believe that the end run may result in the best price, and when we're looking at all ways to save money, we think this is just a prudent way to run your business here at the county, and would encourage you to adopt, how would I say that, adopt opposing project labor agreements? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garrick. Sir? And just, just if I may, can I see a show of hands, anybody else that wants to speak on this item? Just so I kind of get a sense of how many folks are looking at here? Okay, so about five more. Yes, please.
Good morning, Chairman Euler and board members. My name is Dennis Neen. I reside in Sacramento County. I am a carpenter. I do work for the carpenters' organization. I've been, I work with and represent about 400 carpenters that live and work in Placer County. Project labor agreements are no more than a tool that can be used to successfully deliver any given project to the residents of Placer County. And contrary to some of what's been said today, there is no increase in wages. The prevailing wage rate is the prevailing wage rate, and is not determined by the average rate in the Bay Area, it's determined by the most commonly occurring wage rate in the area. That's what determines prevailing wages.
I believe Northern California's prevailing wage under Davis Bacon is set by virtue of the average paid in...
Not the average. It is what is called the modal rate, is the most commonly occurring rate. That's how it's, that's how state law reads.
Northern California is determined by the Bay Area?
It's determined by Northern California. It's the most commonly occurring wage rate in the area.
Okay.
And that can be different. It is different. It is different in Chico, it is different in Redding, it is not different in western Placer, east-western Placer County. It is different in western Placer County than it is in the Bay Area. It is different. But for carpenters, I'm speaking for carpenters because that's something I know something about.
Thank you.
And the tool can be used for many things. It can, and to achieve goals for the community. It can achieve local hire. It doesn't have to achieve local hire, but if that's a desirable end, it could be part of the project labor agreement. If you want education and training as a component, for example, the most recent project labor agreement that I've been involved with was Sacramento City Unified School District, and part of the requirement was that every contractor participate in a training program for the youth in that school district. Very successful project. These are relatively small numbers, but they're real numbers. Over the five-year length of that plant program, they recently re-entered into, extended the project labor agreement, but there was about 140 students. I won't say they were at-risk students. I met with most of them at one time or another, participated in the summertime, and they worked on construction projects funded by the school district, no matter whether the contractor was union or non-union. That didn't make any difference. They had to employ them, they went to class, they were trained. Of that 140 students over the five-year period of time, 80% improved their grade point average. 100% graduated from high school. That's a goal that was achieved through a project labor agreement. In addition, there were both non-union and union contractors participated in the project labor agreement. They paid the prevailing rates, but many of those carpenters that worked for those non-union contractors were indeed represented by me in labor disputes or labor issues. We never had arbitration, there was no dispute, they were settled with the contractor. But many of those guys had never been represented by business represented in their lives. They'd never been represented on wage issues, overtime issues, and I was obligated by the labor agreement to represent them all, and I did. There's a project right now in your county, the Forest Hill Bridge, large, complex project. More complex than most people recognize, from an engineering perspective, from a multi-craft perspective, from the impacts of weather and season on that project. I realize that it's not under project labor agreement, but that's a kind of project might well benefit from a project labor agreement. I've been a carpenter for over 30 years, and over these years, I provided for my life and my family by gathering up tools and becoming proficient at the use of them. Now, believe me, there are some tools I'm better with than others, and some tools I use every day, and some I haven't used for months, some I haven't used for years. I'm probably way more familiar with a hammer than the trammel points. But I don't throw the trammel points away because they're still a tool I may need to use at some point in the future. Please do not dispose of this tool that might be a benefit to the community, the residents of Placer County in the future or at any time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If we could, please, why don't we have a couple of folks line up, kind of queue a little line of folks that are interested in speaking? If you could, that way, as soon as one speaker's done, we just roll right into the next speaker. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Chairman Euler and members of the board. My name's Scott Steelman. I'm a union electrician, and I'm also a resident of Placer County. I live in Lincoln. I currently sit on the Golden Sierra Workforce Investment Board and a member of the Youth Council in Placer County. I'm not going to go over the pros and cons of project labor agreements, and you guys have all discussed that. I'm just going to tell you a little short story that pertains to the vote before you today. I recently moved from Rockland to Lincoln, and everyone knows what's involved with moving. Total royal pain in the butt. The first day we were moving, I was dismantling our bed so we could move it first, so that we could get a good night's sleep after working hard all day and... get a, a good night's sleep after working hard all day and going up and downstairs, moving heavy furniture and boxes. I was taking the frame apart and I noticed that the screws in the frame had special tips on it. It was a specialty tool, Allen wrench. I remember that when we bought the bed, I set it up many years ago, and then I used that tool that came with the bed. It was a specialty tool. It only came with the bed. I thought to myself, there's no way I would have thrown that tool away. So, I started looking through all my tool bags. And finally, in the third tool bag, I found a Ziploc bag labeled specialty bed tool. So, probably 10 years ago, I put that in there. We were able to get the bed in first and get the good rest that night, which saved our backs for the whole move. All I'm saying is that project labor agreements are a specialty tool. Why would you take the tool out of your toolbox and throw it away when down the road, using that tool could make your life easier? I say put the tool in a Ziploc bag, label it specialty tool, specialty construction tool, and throw it in your toolbox. Don't succumb to a bitter board member who's on his way out and wants to throw one last dagger at organized labor. As far as I know, Placer County has never entered into a PLA. And as the old saying goes, don't knock it till you try it. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you, Scott. Yes, sir. And if we could have whoever wants to speak next, come on up. That'd be great.
Supervisors, my name is Matt Kelly. I represent the Sacramento Building and Construction Trades Council. We are a labor organization that represents construction workers in the seven county area, Amador, Eldorado, Nevada, Placer, Sacramento, Sierra, and Yolo Counties. I stand before you today to ask why you would do this. Certainly, the language that I've looked at, I don't know who brought this language to you, but it's considerably flawed. The labor agreement that I have heard bandied about today between you folks, seriously, I wish you had have called me. I could have educated you on this issue a great deal and you could have had more productive conversation. Certainly, you were confused as to Placer County being paid prevailing wages, the workers that work in Placer County being paid the same wages as this construction workers in the San Francisco area. That's, that's not accurate as well. Forcing contractors to sign a labor agreement is simply not true. Contractors sign a labor agreement out of their own volition. If they don't sign it, it's the same thing. It's because they don't agree to a business model that is high-road, fair wage, and promotes good things in the community. That means, and it can't be lost on the business community in this room, that better wages paid to construction workers that live in Placer County mean that they have more money in their pocket to be able to pay for things in the, in the local market, pay their house payment, pay their bills, pay their insurance, put gas in the car, tires on the car. I'm sure it can't be lost on you. Not to mention the health care component. Health care component is vastly underrated in today's world, I think. I still don't think anybody understands how well it helps an individual sleep at night when they know that they can take their son or daughter to the hospital if they need to. And these are things that people that work under prevailing wages enjoy. It's not a luxury for these people. It's the wages that they deserve because they work hard. They work in a hard, physical labor type of environment. They work in inclement weather. They work in hot weather. They work in the rain. So, to try and take these wages away from these people or to implement some type of program that will eliminate the ability for workers of all facets, union or non-union, to work on a project where they're represented by a labor agreement and they are given the proper wages and benefits as they were intended to. Many contractors do not pay the health care, do not pay the retirement. What they do is they pay the monetary equivalent of that to the individual worker. So, that worker walks around on Friday night, got all the money in the world, right? Because he's making all that money on his check. And suddenly, he's got a $600, $700 a month car payment and the money to buy all the beer he wants to on Friday night. So, when he's down in the ravine and they dig him out, he doesn't have any health care. Who's going to pay for it? The county taxpayers once again. They paid him for health care when they paid his wages originally. And now they're going to pay for his health care because he was not given that benefit. So, what you do when you drive, when you take away opportunities like this, is you take away a tool, as many people have said, in your toolbox that enables you to accomplish many things. And one of them is to ensure that the proper wages and benefits are paid on construction projects that the county undertakes. I certainly appreciate your support. Again, I would indicate that the language in the last paragraph of the now therefore it be resolved, it eliminates you from entering into collective bargaining or similar type of agreements on any county project. And I think that's the kind of language that would take you down the wrong road and handcuff you and not enable you to represent your taxpayers and your constituents in the best way. Thank you.
Matt, thank you. If I may, a couple of quick questions. I apologize. Your title, again?
I'm the Business Manager, Financial Secretary for the Sacramento Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm a carpenter by trade, went through the apprenticeship program, have worked in the industry for a number of years, union-paying member. Appreciate everything that the construction industry has given to me.
And I, and I appreciate your, your helping to educate us on PLAs. Who typically, when a PLA is utilized, how does it typically come into be? Who typically asks for a PLA?
SMUD. SMUD has a PLA on a, on a project that they're about to undertake.
But was it because SMUD designed and requested the PLA? I'm asking who?
I can put it to you like this. I got a call from SMUD, said, "We have this project. We'd like to talk to you about a project labor agreement."
Okay.
Toyota Motor Corporation has built all of their United States facilities under project labor agreements.
Okay.
You heard a brother mention the Sac City Unified School District's project labor agreement and the many benefits that we've enjoyed under that. And that's been a great program, the one that he described to you. That was, we approached the school district on that one.
So, so.
But sometimes, sometimes it's a two-way street. Sometimes a developer or the owner of a project understands the value of using union labor, wants to make sure things are done, you know, properly with the right wages being paid. He may understand that there's going to be non-union and union on this project. And that's another clarification I'd like to make. Project labor agreements with public entities cannot preclude anybody from bidding on that project. So, you're allowed to bid whether or not you're a signatory contractor or you're an open shop contractor.
Okay. I'm still trying to understand why a PLA would be required if the project proponent, whether it's SMUD or Toyota, says, "These are the specifications that we are going to include in our project and for people who are bidding on our project." Why would a PLA even be necessary in that case?
Well, a PLA, again, is a management tool that allows you to manage that workforce, those subcontractors that are working for you. Certainly, if you've got subcontractors working side by side that are union and non-union, conflicts have the potential to exist. And the labor agreement gives you, gives you the ability to outline rules for a project that will apply to everybody, whether they be signatory contractors or whether they not be signatory contractors. So, suddenly, everybody's playing under the same level playing field. And the guy that is union doesn't have a different, different deal with the, the owner or the contract, or the general contractor than the non-union subcontractor may have.
I thought I heard you say that all of the minimum requirements are met, whether there's a PLA in place or not. I thought I heard you say that, that perhaps the non-union worker is going to be compensated, or the cost of providing the level of service provided by the laborer is still going to be borne, whether it's union or non-union.
That's exactly true. Prevailing wages are prevailing wages.
Okay.
Regardless if you're union or not-union.
Where, where does the conflict come in that you're describing?
The conflict comes in because the potential for problems to arise on a project, whether they be jurisdictional disputes, whether they be a contractor that was awarded a project that was a non-union contractor.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe there's a trade-out someplace that didn't get that work, that's got a problem with it. So, what, what happens in many cases, and you've probably seen pickets on construction sites in your day, it prevents that ability, it prevents those trade people from respecting or honoring that picket that may exist on the project. So, if you've got a no-strike, no-picket clause, no lockout, we don't like the owner to lock us out either. So, if we're giving up a no-picket, no-strike, we expect the owner to abide by that as well with no, no lockout. So, once again, I don't know if you're able to understand, but you've got some trades that are union, some trades that aren't union.
Sure.
Those trades that aren't union, there's somebody sitting over here that didn't get to work on the job. Sometimes they've got unhappiness about it. They want to represent their workers and they want to come and picket that project. What happens is you've got a no-strike, no-picket clause on the project. Now, those union workers, those contractors that represent those union workers, et cetera, they have to abide by the labor agreement that's in place.
Okay. I guess, and I, I understand that. I haven't seen too many pickets or protests organized by, as you just described, by the non-union labor folks. Most of the ones I see are organized by the union labor folks. The, but I'm still trying to understand, what is the inherent benefit to the taxpayer? We represent the taxpayers of Placer County. What's the inherent benefit to the taxpayer who's paying for a public works job to have a PLA in place? If, as you described it, both employees of a non-union shop and a union shop working side by side are compensated the same, and there's no cost differential then in paying for the labor?
Right.
What is the benefit to the taxpayer to have a PLA in place?
Well, A, it's of no consequential cost to them because the labor is the labor.
Okay.
All right? So, again, it is a tool for this body or another public body to better manage the project without having any of those problems that exist. Now, when you talk about, when you talk about non-union employees and union employees being paid the same wages because they are on a public works project?
Mm-hmm.
I've got to tell you, and I know there's people in this room that work on a daily basis to expose contractors that aren't paying the proper rate for the weight, for the wage, or the, for the work that's being done by their employees.
Sure.
So, project labor agreement prevents that from happening.
We, and we have state laws that prevent that from happening.
But do you know how many people are investigating?
Understand.
For the DIR these days?
I'm still trying to understand what is, what I'm seeing is you, on behalf of your organization, doing a fine job representing why we should keep a PLA. Yet, everything that I'm hearing in terms of the need for the jurisdiction to maintain the tool and the well-orchestrated message that I'm hearing from the union folks about the need for us to maintain the tool, has not once told us what the tool actually accomplishes on behalf of the taxpayer. And, and I, I guess what I'm-
You hire an individual in many instances for a construction project to perform construction management for you?
Okay.
What does that guy do for you? I'm trying to tell you that it enables you to better manage the workforce that's working for you. And it does that in a variety of ways.
Okay.
It also gives you the ability to accomplish certain things that you may wish to accomplish. It's different wherever you go. Local hire may be important to you. Education or, or the ability to, for workforce development may be important to you. So, you can accomplish many things with the labor agreement. But primarily, what you're doing is you're ensuring that there's an even playing field for all the contractors. They all work under the same set of rules that you've prescribed in the negotiate, after you've negotiated an agreement.
And I apologize. Again, I don't mean to be combative. I thought you already said state law does that. That state law determines that you have to pay these people, whether they're union, non-union, on a prevailing wage job, the same. I thought you said that it already does that. So, I'm still trying to figure out, and you use the example of a, a big project. We have one, the South Placer Detention Facility, the new jail.
Right.
Multiple trades built over multiple years. How would the taxpayers of Placer County have benefited, have come out ahead if that had been done under PLA versus the way we're doing it right now?
They could have benefited because I can assure you, there's got to be contractors on that job that are paying their employees prevailing wages, but aren't providing health care benefits, aren't providing any retirement to those individuals. The intent of prevailing wage is to improve that individual's life by making sure they have retirement, making sure they have health care. But, in its infinite wisdom, the state of California allows for monetary remuneration for those benefits if the contractor chooses not to pay them. One thing that the labor agreement could do is it could stipulate that those benefits must be paid. It could also stipulate that work on that project would, again, would not be stopped by any, any labor unrest. It would include labor harmony language so that there weren't any problems on the project. It would include that, again, everybody on the project was treated fairly. Everybody had the health care. Everybody had payment going into their retirement. So, it, it's not something that, maybe it doesn't mean much to you, but to an individual working on the, on the project, it means a great deal to know that their best interests as construction workers on that project are being represented by the county because the county cares enough to make sure there's an agreement in place that makes sure everybody plays by the same rules.
Sure.
And that, you know what? When I come to the job, I don't have to wonder, "Am I going to be paid the right wage today?" Placer County is ensuring that I will.
Okay. And then, just to summarize, what, what I believe, I heard you say is that project labor agreements do not preclude non-union contractors from participating.
They do not.
They simply impose the requirements that are established by the union's standard for providing health care benefits, retirement benefits.
Well, those, those benefits are all based on prevailing wages. The benefits that my union brothers and I enjoy.
But as you rightly pointed out, there's a difference between the monetary remuneration versus the actual payment of a health care.
Benefit.
For a health care benefit. So, what I, I think I hear you saying is that, on the one hand, it doesn't preclude non-union participation. But on the other hand, it imposes all of the requirements that would, that a, typically in this market, only a union shop would be able to meet.
No, I think that typically only a union shop would only be able to meet is not accurate because that prevailing wage?
Uh-huh.
That component, prevailing wage has different modal rates. You have the wages, you have the, you have the health care, you have the retirement. That health care rate?
Mm-hmm.
Any individual contractor should be able to find suitable health care for that worker and his dependent children based on that dollar value.
And your, your only concern is that it's being paid to the worker as cash as opposed to the employer having to pay to provide health care?
Well, not my only concern, but I take you back to the opportunity. Now, that individual hurts himself at home, cuts his foot off with the, with the lawnmower or something like that, and you have paid him health care once already while he was working on this project, but he didn't get that benefit.
Understood. Thank you.
So, you'll, you'll be on the hook for it once again.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Certainly, certainly contractors that don't pay those health care benefits, they are, they are putting a burden on all the taxpayers in Placer County because in order to provide those social safety net programs, more money needs to be coming from the taxpayer because that contractor is not doing his part.
Okay. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah. If, when we negotiate a project labor agreement, can we request or ask for local hires?
Yes, you can.
Training for apprenticeship programs and as well as our young people, men and women that need the training?
There are a lot of different apprenticeship programs and you can certainly require apprenticeship.
And?
That's state law as well, Mr. Holmes.
And as far as no-strike provisions, we can require those as well.
That's correct.
And plus the benefits that would be, the subcontractor who is currently providing benefits will be required to provide those benefits on that job.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I represent employees. I represent the people that work out on those construction projects. Please, keep that in mind when other people talk to you that represent employers that don't necessarily buy into the high-road, decent-wage business model that we're encouraging you not to take out of your toolbox. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery has a question. Perhaps it might be for you.
Yeah, I wanted to just follow up on something that you said. You indicated that PLAs were similar in- You indicated that PLAs were similar in many ways to construction management agreements, because you're basically, essentially creating an agreement that says, these are the conditions we're going to operate under. And to follow up on Supervisor Holmes, some of those agreements could be, we're not going to strike, we're not going to walk out, there aren't going to be any lockouts, we're going to agree to pay people, union, non-union, the same wage and the same benefits. We could require them to be local employees, thereby keeping the money locally within our own economy. Am I right in understanding that those are all part of a potential PLA?
That, in addition to dispute resolution mechanisms, there are many advantages.
Thank you.
One final question, I'm sorry, Supervisor Montgomery.
I just wanted to ask you, if that was negotiated, at the end of the day, doesn't that cost the taxpayer in the county more money?
Negotiated when
All these things, apprenticeship, and all these things that you're saying
No, see, there is money in prevailing wages. One of those modal rates that I discussed, wages, benefits, healthcare, there's an apprenticeship contribution paid, or that is mandated by prevailing wages, that provides for apprenticeship. Also, prevailing wages and Labor Code 777.5 requires that one in every five individuals, it's 20% of the hours reported on a prevailing wage project, be attributed to an apprentice. So that's basically, one in five every, one in five individuals on that project should be an apprentice.
So, just one final question. Who are signatories to a project labor agreement?
Who are signatories?
Yeah.
Typically, your contractor, your labor unions, your, you know, the owner of the project. With Sutter Hospital, Sutter is a signatory to the labor agreement at Sutter Hospital?
So, using the jail as an example, if the county had had a requirement, utilized this tool of a project labor agreement, then really, the union could impose whatever requirements you wanted within there on the general contractor, on the construction manager. If we, as the county, provided you that tool of a project labor agreement, and said it is a requirement of this public works project, we have essentially handed you the tool to go and require of that project manager essentially whatever it is that you want.
I'm hard pressed to figure out what I may require him to do. I don't, that doesn't equate to me.
Then why had the requirement in the first place?
Let me go back. You would be, somebody from your staff, your city management staff, your facilities, would be part of that negotiating team. I don't do it by myself with the contractor with your approval. You don't give me carte blanche to go and do what I want to do.
Fair enough.
And again, it's a partnership. It's not, it's not just between our organization and the contractor, it's in partnership with the county, and there, the proper channel is there.
Great. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kelly, for your time.
Thank you for your time.
And for answering all those questions. Ma'am, go ahead, you were, sir. Ma'am, if you'd like to have a seat here, and you can be next. Because as you just saw, you have no idea how long this person's going to stand here.
Good morning, Placer County Board of Supervisors, Chairman Yular. I'm Nicole Garing, I'm Government Affairs Director for the Associated Builders and Contractors at Golden Gate Chapter. We are a construction trade association. We've got five chapters in California that represent over 1,200 companies with several thousand employees, and we have several contractor members who have performed work in Placer County. And we're actually here today to support your amendment, your resolution in changing the Purchasing Policy Manual to prohibit requirements for project labor agreements. We think that's a great thing. We oppose local, we support local government ordinances that prohibit requirements that are anti-competitive or discriminatory in nature. While you have heard that everybody, yes, can in fact bid on jobs with project labor agreements, you have hundreds of projects going on every day in California with a mix of union and non-union contractors, generals and subs, all the time. No problems on the project. If there is a picket or a strike, it's usually not a non-union contractor, and the National Labor Relations Act has in place dual-gate signs where you can set those up so there's different gates people can get through in order to take care of any situation that might occur on the job. We support fair and open competition, free enterprise, and freedom of choice in training. We also operate apprenticeship programs in several trades as required in the Public Contracting Code. You may recall, there's been an attorney that has filed lawsuits on several projects in the county, Placer Vineyards Project, as an example of one. And we support and applaud you in your efforts of taking the lead in joining places like Orange County and San Diego County. What you want to do is have, use the best qualified contractors at the best price. That's the most important thing for you to do, to protect your taxpayer dollars, and the best way that you can do that is to support fair and open competition, and use the best qualified contractors at the best price. So I applaud you for looking at this, and I support you in your efforts in joining Placer County, San Diego County, and Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? And then, if anybody else wants, if they come up as well, please come up front. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, my name's Beverly Walker. I'm from the Sacramento District, and I want to thank everyone for being here. I am very nervous, I'm not a public speaker, but I'm very passionate about being in this trade. And what, to me, the strong point, and I'm going to make it clear, about the PLAs, it has given me strength, commitment, devotion, and willpower, the education that I need. I did non-union for three years, did not guarantee me anything. If I, and I am a hard worker, but if I got hurt doing roof work, working non-union, I'm out for work for good. And what the union did was give me that hope and that strength. And as a single parent, it gave my kids strength. So, to take that away, you don't want the person to grow in lifetime. So the PLA is a good thing, and I really appreciate it, because now I can go on with my life, as if I need to travel, it's going with me. So you don't understand what it does to someone. Yeah, I graduated, yeah, I do college credit. But it's a strong point, and it gives, PLAs give order. Non-union don't give order. And you can't take that away from someone. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, go ahead.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Andrew Meredith, and I am the Vice President of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. We cover an area that goes south to the city of Gall, to north, pretty close to the Oregon border. We represent over 1,600 members in our jurisdiction, many of whom are residents of Placer County. And we represent the middle class as a whole. Just by a show of hands, how many people are here from organized labor today? Those are the people right there, ladies and gentlemen, that represent the middle class. Ms. Garing and the ABC, the affiliate that she works for, they don't represent the middle class, they represent big business. And there's something seriously wrong with this country right now. It's almost a bad word to say that you're a member of the middle class. PLAs were instituted a long time ago as a protection for the middle class. It gives you the opportunity, we've talked about tools in the toolbox, it gives you the opportunity to impose local hiring restrictions. What's more important to the taxpayers of Placer County than creating local jobs? You want to take a PLA for a test drive, put a restriction on there, that the contractors that pick up the project have to hire 50% of their workers from within Placer County? That's doing your taxpayers justice. When the local dollar is earned locally, it turns over seven times before it leaves the community. Seven times. Statistics show that. So, does it make sense to throw out a tool that could provide that type of an opportunity for Placer County and for the taxpayers? PLAs offer awarding agencies protections against work stoppages. Down in the city of Folsom, they have a project going on called the Cal ISO Building. There was a work stoppage on that project that cost over $75,000. This is an opportunity to prevent those type of work stoppages. They also make sure that contractors play by the rules. That's why Ms. Garing and the ABC don't like it, because frankly, they don't want to play by the rules. Because they care about profit more than they care about the workers on the job site. Every time the middle class starts to rise up in this country, it seems like big business finds a way to strike back. That's why Ms. Garing's here today. That's why she's got this Board of Supervisors convinced that it's a good idea to bring forward passing this PLA restriction in a lame-duck session of this Board of Supervisors. Let's not forget that in November, we've got a new board member taking office, and he was elected on a middle-class platform. You don't think that the voters of Placer County care about the middle class? Let's look at the election in District 1. We've got an incumbent who ran on a business platform, running against a middle-class platform candidate, and he was overwhelmingly elected by Placer County voters. Let's put this off until November. You want to have a discussion? Let's wait until the newly-elected Board of Supervisor member, Mr. Duran, has an opportunity to weigh in. Thank you.
Good morning.
Just real quickly, how many other folks wish to speak after this gentleman? Okay, this gentleman, you were our last speaker.
Wow, I'm it.
You're it. Finish with a bang.
My name's Tim Wyatt. I live at 4432 White Oak Court in Rockland. I'm actually a little upset that this board would tie its own hands where there's opportunity. There's opportunity for a lot of things in our county. I enjoy the fact that I live in Rockland, and I hear terms of, it almost seems like an attack, that having a PLA would hurt our county. I hear a lot of talk about this city of Sacramento PLA. I'm an electrician. The PLA actually offered to everyone for the bidding process, allowed a company by the name of Vandenberg Electric, who was a non-signatory contractor. They're not union. To come in, do the work, they actually went through the bidding process, hired on their individuals, worked the project, when the project was over for them, they're still a merit shop. They're still a non-union, non-signatory shop. It didn't prevent them from bidding the project, it didn't prevent them from making any money. What it allowed them to do was to have a work atmosphere that was harmonious to all workers. When the project was over, some of the workers decided that they wanted to stay union because they enjoyed the benefits of pension, of training, of health coverage. That's important. That's important in our county as well. To remove this from your hands, from taking it away from you, allowing you to do something that you might use in the future. I hear that you've never used it before, but you're taking away the opportunity that you might use it in the future. I want to thank you for your time, and I also want to remind you that Placer County is a place of opportunity. Don't take away your chances for that by precluding, or excuse me, excluding PLAs from something that you may or may not use in the future. It's up to you to decide if you want to use them or not. And a PLA doesn't actually tie your hands. In fact, it provides you the opportunity to put things in place that this board may decide that they want in the future, regardless of economic times, regardless of what things are going on around. You guys can make a decision and come to an agreement with employers of all trades, union and non-union, to come together and work under your terms. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We've already heard from you. You're just going to submit a letter under the record?
I can submit this letter.
Yeah, absolutely. Hand it to the court.
Okay.
Submit it under the record. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to bring it back to the Board Supervisor Rockholm.
I would just like to conclude by saying, and make a correction, my term runs till January 2011. I feel I am representing my district. I have not, I've had a bad taste in my mouth about PLAs ever since the power plant vote that we took in Roseville. We were forced to do it, we had no choice. If we would have not went with the PLA, we would have lost that opportunity for that permit for that plant. So I've seen the strong-arm part of it. I was a member of the union for many years, I have no problem with unions, but I think there's also no problem with non-union members having a shot, too. This PLA, all it does is stop and make more fair competition. Unions will still compete, but that component will not be in the county. That's amongst the contractors, the builders, et cetera. William Copper used the EIR to file a PLA, against the Placer Vineyards Project. When that power center, when that starts moving, they'll have to negotiate that, but I don't want the county to be a part of that. So that's where I stand, and I make a motion that we support this.
Second. Okay, there's a motion by Rockholm, second by Wyatt to support the recommended revision to the Placer County Purchasing Policy Manual regarding prohibiting any requirement for project labor agreements on county public projects. Other discussion by board members? Supervisor Holmes?
I spend a lot of time looking at the pros and cons of a project labor agreement. And we've never had one in Placer County. And I think it's a tool that we can use. And I'm particularly concerned about our young people and people that are no longer in the jobs that they were trained for. Many people have to have re-education about work. And this, a project labor agreement allows us to negotiate for our young people and people that are out of jobs, that have no construction experience or carpenter experience to get training. And so, I'm going to oppose this proposal, basically because I'm very concerned about our young people finding good, decent jobs. And the unions provide training, and they provide apprenticeship programs.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, following up on Supervisor Holmes' comment, I, too, am going to oppose this. I don't think a problem exists that we're even addressing here today. We've never had one of these. I think we're talking about something that we haven't been through, so we don't, we don't even have anything to compare with here. We don't have a yardstick. And frankly, I agree with all the folks here who said, why throw away a tool in your toolbox? It's a tool. We don't have to use it, we may never have a PLA. But I would like to know that this board and all future boards do have that opportunity. So I will also be opposing this.
Thank you.
Terrifying.
Yes, I'm sorry Supervisor Holmes, you want
I just wanted to clarify one comment. An important component, our high schools and community colleges are suffering through no fault of their own. They've had to cut back on all those programs for training, whether it's air conditioning and heating, automotive technology, construction trades. And I don't see that coming back really quickly. And so that's another reason why I'm going to oppose this, because I think the unions are going to provide, take up the slack, again, for our young people that need decent jobs.
Thank you. Supervisor Wyatt?
Obviously, I'm going to support this motion. And I just want to point out a couple things. One is, I think our biggest responsibility in contracting is to our taxpayers. The best way we're going to ensure that we create the greatest value to our taxpayers, particularly in the long run, is to open up our contracting to all of the market, both union and non-union. And whereas PLA doesn't preclude non-union work, the sad reality is that in Placer County, whereas no PLAs have gone forward with a county as a partner, there has been mischief played by organized labor through Mr. Copper in county processes that have cost the taxpayers money. This simply is an announcement that we're going to let the market find the best value for the taxpayers in the long run.
Supervisor, welcome. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No.
I'm sorry. Over and over, I ask one question, and that is, what's the benefit to the taxpayers? And I keep hearing this is a tool. And we don't want to take the tool out of the toolbox. But whose tool is it, really? I hear, well I hear, well, we can impose local hiring restrictions. We can do that anyway. We can do that outside of a PLA. We can impose that requirement on any public contract that we let. We can say, if we want to, if we believe as a board it's in the best interest of the taxpayers of Placer County, to say, "You have to hire from within this geographic area," we can do that. I hear, you know, through a PLA, you can require healthcare. We can do that. Simply put, the PLA is not a tool in the county's toolbox. And unfortunately, where the PLA gets utilized isn't as we're talking about, you know, the specifics of healthcare for this individual or something like that. Where it gets utilized and where the county gets drawn into it, and where the county, I believe, needs to take a firm stand saying, "We will not enter into PLAs," is when it comes to suing the county over our environmental document. Because it's at that point that it is the county's project. It's the county's environmental document. And it's at that point that the threat of litigation being resolved, or the promise of litigation being resolved, if we enter into a PLA, it's at that point that the county is susceptible. So I believe if we take an affirmative stand saying that we're just not going to do them, then those people who might otherwise be filing sequel lawsuits against us, claiming it's for the benefit of the environment, might be a bit dissuaded if they know the county has a policy saying they're not going to enter into these, thereby saving the taxpayers hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, that we spend in litigation costs defending the project in the first place. If a lawsuit is being brought that can be settled if we agree to invoking a PLA, then maybe that lawsuit doesn't get brought in the first place. And as to the, kind of, cheap-shot political comments about lame duck session and supervisor on his way out, you know, I don't question Supervisor Rockholm's motivations, and quite frankly, his motivations, whatever they may be, have no bearing on whether or not this is good policy on behalf of the taxpayers. And I believe that any tool that we can take away from somebody who would seek to increase county costs through litigation on our environmental documents is one tool I don't want them to have, and I do want us to work affirmatively to take that tool away from them. So with that, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
No.
Montgomery?
No.
You alert.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much for your participation in the discussion. And there are a number of people that are here for our 10 o'clock timed item, which we're running a little bit late for, so we'll go ahead and move on to the 10 o'clock timed item, which is approve a resolution proclaiming September, you can have a seat with staff if you want to just stay there, that's fine. Resolution proclaiming September 2010 is Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Placer County.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Maureen Baumann with the Adult System of Care. I'm delighted to bring this forward for your consideration, a resolution proclaiming September 2010 as Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Placer County. And as for your support, our local Recovery Happens event on September 25th. This year's national campaign, Join the Voices for Recovery Now More Than Ever, is a focus on the recovery resources that exist in our community. And because of our timing this morning, I'm going to change the order a little bit and ask that you hear from a voice of recovery from one of our Placer County programs, and I'll have Cara Lucero do just a brief introduction. And then we'll reverse the order of the message.
Fantastic, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cara Lucero, and I'm a program supervisor for the Adult System of Care in our alcohol and other drug programs. And I also coordinate the Recovery Happens event annually. This is our 10th annual this year, and I would like to give these to our clerk if that's okay.
Please.
And in part of what I do, I have the wonderful opportunity of working with different individuals who are in their recovery process. And our guest speaker today is one of those people, and I am so inspired by his courage and his strength in working in his recovery, and I would like to introduce you to John Pacini.
Morning.
Morning. Well, I'm nervous. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to be here today. I arrived at the Dewitt Community Center outpatient program in 2009 in a very horrible struggle against addiction. When I arrived there, I was willing and I was trying, but I was unable to beat this addiction. However, I came across some very important people in my life who were helping to love me really when I was having a hard time loving myself. They put me in the outpatient program where I learned relapsed prevention tools. I learned time management skills and to set my week up one week in advance. That's not really important. What's important is to find out what I was going to do with the idle time, and then what programs I would put in place in my life to keep myself from having that idle time. I also learned to be an inspiration to my peers within the outpatient program and to take suggestion and advice from those peers as well. The most important thing that I realize is that the love that a few of these ladies had for me at the outpatient program, and I would like to name those people specifically. Cara Lucero, who did my assessment to get me into the outpatient program. I would like to thank Cheryl Trenwith, who single-handedly supported me emotionally and carried me when I was just a mess. Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you so much. I would like to thank Diane Alrich and Diane Rose, who worked the outpatient program. While I was there, still, though, I was learning all these tools. I was unable to stay clean, even though I was going to the outpatient program. And really what ended up happening was they ended up throwing me a lifeline. And Diane said, Diane Rose said, "Would you like it if we could get you funded for a residential treatment facility?" And I hesitated, and I said, "You know, I've been to rehab before. What am I going to learn that I haven't already learned?" And then I remembered, you know, keep coming back. You got to, you got to keep fighting, you know? If I don't fight this, who's going to? When I ended up getting to the Progress House Inpatient Residential Treatment Facility that was funded by Placer County, I heard one thing, and I'm going to tell you a quick story. They put in a DVD, and it was a comedian who was actually in recovery himself, and he had an audience of recovering addicts and alcoholics. And he said, "Let me get a round of applause for all the people that are alcoholics." And a bunch of them clapped and said, "Yay." And they said, "Let me get a round of applause for all the people who are addicted to methamphetamine and crack, yay." And then he said, "Let me get a round of applause for all those people who are shopaholics, yay." And he says, and excuse me, he says, "Let me get a round of applause for all the sex and love addicts out there." And everybody, "Yay!" And the place went crazy. And then he said, "Now, how many of you would like any one of those things for your children?" And the place was silent. And with tears in his eyes, he said, "Now, when are you going to do that for you?" And that's what I needed to hear. The funds that was presented to me, the opportunity that was given to me, what Placer County did for me was that one statement right there. That put me in the launching pad for my own recovery. It helped me to save my life. I just want to thank you so much for putting those funds and investing it into me, and I want to let you know that every time I have a recovery birthday, I call Jamie Gallagher, who I didn't mention earlier, Cara, I call Cheryl, who else? I'm forgetting. Diane and Diana. And I call them, and I let them know, "Thank you. Your investment into me is still working. It is still working." So thank you very much. And I also want to just end with this. I have a time restraint. I needed to leave by 10:40. So I was told yesterday, John, you have been chosen for the store manager position with one of the big wireless companies in the area. And I have to leave to go to San Ramon today to have my final green light interview with the Director of Operations for Retail Sales.
You can give your company a plug.
What's that?
You can give your company a plug.
Okay, sprint. But that is a direct result of the outpatient program at the Dewitt Community Center and all the ladies that invested into me and the funds that were invested into me. And I want to let you know that recovery is possible. It happens. I don't think I'm the face for recovery, but I'm the face for my own recovery, and I want to thank you so very much for giving me the opportunity to take my life back. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, John, I know you have to go, but I think just really quickly Supervisor Montgomery might want to make a comment.
John, I just wanted to say, for someone who was nervous, you were extremely eloquent and well-spoken. Good luck with your green light interview, and live carefully. We don't want to waste this recovery.
Thank you, John, for your time. Thank you for being here, for your story. Appreciate it.
A little hard to follow that. So there is truly a lot to celebrate in Placer County, and as you know, many people, here's an example, are living productive, satisfying lives as a result of recovery from alcoholism and drug dependence. Placer residents completed many programs, reconnected with their families, and have returned to lead healthy and productive lives. Six hundred and seventeen people completed treatment. Last year, in our substance abuse programs, that's 64% of the folks that went through those treatment programs. And treatment programs are really only one of the paths of recovery. Other residents have experienced recovery on their own with the assistance of self-help through faith-based organizations, and with medication treatment through their primary doctors. There's really no one path to recovery. Each person's intervention and treatment is unique to that own person. And in Placer County, we really try and match people to that appropriate resource, be it a funded program or be it an unfunded program. We really try to use all the available resources that are in our community. So our path to recovery will be celebrated at our 10th Annual Recovery Happens Event on September 25th. This year, it's going to be at the Meadow Vista Park in Meadow Vista. We're going to have excellent speakers like our very own Supervisor Holmes, who comes every year, and it really is a great, a great joining of all the voices in terms of recovery. So with that, I would recommend that you proclaim September 2010 as Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Placer County, that you demonstrate continued support and commitment to the alcohol and drug treatment and recovery programs, and you support our local Recovery Happens event on September 25th.
Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, aye. I look forward to being at the Recovery Happens event. It's really inspiring to see how many people are in recovery and stay in recovery. This year, I'll have a family member there that has been in recovery for about almost six months, and so it'll be very special to me to be there and speak, and good work. It's tough. So many people try and they fail. They got to keep trying, and programs like this that offer support are so, so important. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes. Any other comments, questions by board members before we go out to the public? Seeing none, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Please.
First, Michael Murphy, again, 5617 W Road in Rockland. I get a little tired of hearing our social programs and our socialism promoted before the supervisors, who in turn come back and fund these things with millions and millions of dollars. And I don't want to diminish this man's story, because I've been involved in this. I wrote my first book on this subject and on county services. I've actually done contract work with the county Assistant for Care Services and so on. And millions and millions of dollars are spent on this, but I don't see the openness and the transparency on the actual success stories and what's happened with this money. They always bring somebody forward who has a success story, one person. Millions and millions of dollars are spent through the county's social programs. This is communism. It's all there is to it, and that's exactly what we're funding here. And I'd like to see the successful results. So if we're going to promote this thing, if we're going to have a story representing how well the services are doing, let's have the numbers. Let's show the people exactly, these people got help. This is how many. This is where the money was spent, and this is how much it costs per person to do this. Because we do have other programs that are privately run, that are nonprofits, and so on and so forth. And I'd like to see the justification for the county Health and Human Services. I've worked in there. I saw the waste. I saw things that I thought were dead wrong happening and that nobody seemed to know about. People who live in the county just don't know, because all they see is somebody that's paraded before here in a promotional speech on to support, in this case, Adult System of Care. And I'm tired of seeing that. I'd like to see the other side represented, and that's why I'm standing up here. We have to show that this is communism, socialism, and if you think this is the best way for it to work, I strongly disagree. There's better ways. Thank you.
Murphy, our board on Thursday, as a part of our budget update on last Thursday, our board heard about an hour and a half presentation from the Department of Health and Human Services, where we went through their budget rather exhaustively, where we did hear all the numbers that you were talking about or asking for, where we did get a look at the numbers of folks served by the various programs, the dollars being spent for folks being served by the various programs, Department of Health and Human Services, ongoing commitment to working within the private sector to provide services, not just through government employees. So I believe if you'd been here or taken advantage of the live stream on Thursday to watch the nearly 90-minute budget presentation that this board went through with Health and Human Services, many of your questions might have been answered.
It's on the web.
Yes, and it is available on the web, so you can go and look at it. Supervisor Montgomery, any comments?
Yeah, I really want to second Chairman Yuler's comments. We covered this exhaustively on Thursday, and I'm sorry that it didn't fit into your calendar to make it to that event, but I think to denigrate the job that these folks do and the transparency and the openness that they do provide does a disservice both to this board and to the folks who provide this service. And then my second point is, I don't know what you consider the value of a saved human life. I know I have an idea of what that means to me, and so I can't assign a dollar figure and say, "Oh, you know, if we can get someone into recovery for X amount of dollars, it's worth it." But if it's X amount of dollars plus one cent, it's not. You know, I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound disrespectful, but I think you are, I'm just going to stop there before I say anything really rude.
Supervisor Holmes?
Well, if I can rebut this slightly.
No, Mr. Murphy, you've had your opportunity to comment on the item before the board.
Well, you're commenting on me now, and I have experience in this, and I have a great deal of education on this.
Murphy, at this time, I'm going to ask that you please have a seat. You've had an item, an opportunity to comment on the item before the board. Thank you very, thank you very much. Supervisor Holmes?
I would suggest that Mr. Murphy go to the Recovery Happens. You'll see probably between 150 and 200 people in various stages of recovery. Some of them, I think last year, there was a lady there that was in recovery for 36 years, 40 years. And there's people there that have been in recovery for a month. But it's, as I said, it's inspiring to see that recovery happens. It can really happen, but it's, again, it's tough. So anyhow, if you wanted to see some results, that would be the place to go.
Supervisor Wiegand?
And I'd just add that what I think is worth studying is that Placer's Department of Health and Human Services is in fact a model as to how to deliver these services most effectively and cost-effectively. There's a huge amount of data mirroring that fact. I would be proud on any moment to talk that and bring the folks in to discuss it. So with that, I'll just make motion to approve the motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, Wiegand, second by Holmes, to approve the resolution proclaiming September of 2010 as Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Placer County. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I want to quickly take up the 10:30 before we take the 10:15. The 10:30 timed item is simply, our board is being requested to continue the conversation or the appeal, the third-party appeal of Livingston's Concrete Batch Plant, take it off calendar, and direct staff to renotice the appeal at a future date after completion of all necessary additional analysis. Are there any questions by board members on the 10:30 timed item? If not, can I have a motion to grant staff's request to take it off calendar to be noticed later? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you Supervisor Holmes. Is there anybody in the public that would wish to address this 10:30 timed item to continue this item? Yes, ma'am, real quick. I need you to step up, please. I need you to come up to the microphone. We need your name for the record. We've got to be able to get all this stuff on the record.
My name's April Cherine.
My name is April Cherino, and I was just wondering, the notice that I had received had said that this was the final call on it, or are you actually going to be...
No, what we're doing is we're taking it off calendar entirely, and we will renotice when staff has some additional analysis that they're looking for to bring this to the board for action. It will be publicly renoticed, and so we will be, we're deferring any action to future time.
So publicly notice, it's going to be in the paper?
It'll be in the paper. It'll be, we'll meet all the public noticing requirements that we have by virtue of mailing. We have to mail within a certain proximity. We have to mail all interested parties of record.
Okay.
We have to notice in the paper, and I'm sure your local publication will do a nice job of making you aware of it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address this quickly before we move it? Okay, seeing none. I believe I had a motion by, was it Rockholm or Weigant? It was Supervisor Weigant and a second by Rockholm in order to continue this off calendar to be renoticed later. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. And being able to dispense with that, we will now jump back to the 10:15 timed item. This is the Community Development Resource Agency's hearing on a third-party appeal for a minor use permit regarding the Celebration Community Fellowship Church. And Paul, are you taking this one this morning?
I'm just going to introduce, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This item before you is a third-party appeal of the Planning Commission's May 27 approval of a minor use permit for construction of a nineteen thousand square foot church on a three-point-five acre undeveloped parcel for the Celebration Community Fellowship Church. The project is located adjacent to eastbound Interstate 80 on-ramp and Dry Creek Road over Crossy in the North Auburn area. And just as background, this item was continued from your August 10 board meeting after receiving correspondence from the representative of the United Auburn Indian Community requesting additional time to review the project. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jerry Haas for his presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Board. The Celebration Community Fellowship currently holds worship in Meadow Vista with the purchase of the site in 2005. They began developing plans to construct a permanent church on this parcel you see pictured up on the screen, three-and-a-half acre site, as Paul mentioned. Also in 2005, the church contracted an archaeologist, Raymond Benson, to conduct a Phase One archaeological report to determine the potential for cultural resources to exist on the site. Phase One is really just a record search, looking at what's been located, what's been discovered around the site in the vicinity, potentially on the site. And it paves the way more or less for a Phase Two, which would be the actual pedestrian survey, the digging of test pits on the site and so forth. Mr. Benson concluded that there was a strong likelihood of discovering cultural resources, and he recommended a Phase Two survey be conducted. The church commissioned a Phase Two survey, which did determine the presence of cultural resources and concluded that the site plan should locate the church to the south of the drainage swell. And you can see that pictured right through here. So the church is going to get moved down into this area. And that would be moving the church further away from the most significant resources that were discovered, that he discovered. In 2007, the applicant submitted an environmental questionnaire to Placer County and a proposed site plan for the project that was similar to what you see in this image here. A mitigated negative declaration was completed, and the project was scheduled to be heard by the zoning administrator in September 2008. This was a minor use permit, after all. During the public review period for the original mitigated negative declaration, staff received two comment letters challenging the environmental document and requesting a continuation of the ZA hearing. The hearing was continued, and staff coordinated a site visit with concerned Native Americans, the project archaeologists, representatives of the Native American Heritage Commission, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the property owner and his consultant. The results of this site visit and subsequent discussion was that a new Phase Two archaeological survey should be prepared by another archaeologist. The church then hired a second archaeologist, Cindy Arrington, who's present here today. She conducted the survey, which, a second Phase Two survey like I mentioned, which indicated not only a greater number of archaeological resources on the site, but also resources of greater significance than have been discovered previously. Ms. Arrington's report concluded that the most significant resources existed in the northwest corner portion of the site, and that's this area up here, adjacent to the Interstate 80 on-ramp. Ms. Arrington also prepared a detailed monitoring and treatment plan, that's Attachment J in your staff report, to handle potential discoveries in the event something is discovered during construction. Because the archaeologists, both of the previous two archaeologists, had slightly different conclusions as to the extent of the cultural resources on the site, staff requested that the applicant commission an independent third-party peer review of Ms. Arrington's report. We contacted the Native American Heritage Commission, who provided a list of recommended archaeologists, and we selected one from that list. The peer review found some disagreement with the methodologies of Ms. Arrington's report, but generally agreed with the conclusions with one notable exception. The peer review suggested that the site be considered eligible for recordation into the National Register of Historic Places. Ms. Arrington's report was then revised to include this language, and a modified mitigated negative declaration was sent out for public review. I'd like to take some time to explain that Condition 36 addresses site eligibility into the National Register of Historic Places. Condition 36 reads, "Prior to any construction activities on the site, the owner shall submit an application to the State Historic Office of Preservation for nomination of the site into the National Register of Historic Places. Determination of eligibility or lack thereof must be received prior to approval of the improvement plans from Placer County. The purpose of this condition is to assure that no site disturbance can occur until the property owner has received a determination that the site is or is not eligible for recordation into the National Register. In the event the site is found eligible, SHPO, State Historic Office of Preservation, will set forth requirements for recordation. All work necessary to satisfy the State Historic Preservation Office to record the site into the National Register must be completed prior to issuance of any construction or grading permit." So no work is going to go on until that condition is satisfied. Staff believes that this condition is adequate to address the concerns expressed by the appellant. As you can see on the site plan, an environmentally sensitive area, that's this half circle you see up here in the northwest corner, it's seventy-foot radius emanating from the property line right at this point, will be recorded on the parcel as an exclusive public easement to remain in perpetuity. This will avoid impacts to the most sensitive area of the site and allow access to tribal descendants for sacred purposes. Through this avoidance, with the protection of mitigation, with the monitoring and treatment plan, and the requirement that the property owner submit an application for recordation to the National Register of Historic Places, staff has determined that the potential impacts of cultural resources will be reduced to a less insignificant level. On May 27, the Planning Commission heard the Celebration Church request. The commission considered written and oral testimony provided by several individuals as described in your staff report. On a vote of five to nothing, the commission adopted a motion to approve the project as proposed, finding that the project was consistent with the underlying zoning, with the Auburn Bowman Community Plan land use designation, and with the mitigation set forth in a modified mitigated negative declaration, they determined that all environmental impacts, including potential impacts to cultural resources, would be reduced to a less insignificant level. An appeal to the Planning Commission's approval was filed by Don Reiberg on June 7, 2010. The basis of the appeal is in the form of a letter identical to the letter provided to you and considered by the Planning Commission. So it's not new information. They just want to make sure everyone hears it. The appellant states that the village site of Hawnosum Soka and the burial site of Hawnosum Ustoo are within the boundaries of the proposed project, and the cultural report failed to identify these features because oral history of the site, represented by Mr. Coney and others, was ignored during site investigation. The appellant also states that the current limits of the proposed environmentally sensitive area and the establishment of the monitoring and treatment plan will not adequately protect the site or the cultural resources that may exist there. Ms. Arrington provided a response, that's Exhibit Five in your staff reports, which counters the assertion of insufficient analysis by summarizing the testing methods that were employed on the site and referring to the previous contact with ten local tribes, as well as correspondence with the Native American Heritage Commission and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
Just quickly for the record, I think in my board packet, it's Exhibit Four is her response.
Oh, my apologies.
That's right.
Thank you for that. Ms. Arrington restated her determination that if a village site exists in a vicinity, it is not directly under the project site, but exists to the west, in this case, it's going to be up here, adjacent to the Interstate 80 on-ramp, Dry Creek Road. Ms. Arrington concluded that because the most sensitive area is to be avoided by the project design, and because a treatment plan will sufficiently protect any cultural resources that may be found to exist on the site, potential impacts to cultural resources are considered to be less insignificant. With that, staff recommends your board deny the appeal and approve the modified mitigated negative declaration and project as proposed, subject to the findings and the recommended conditions of approval contained in the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions by board members, staff? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, Mr. Haas, thank you. I want to, getting back to the letter from Ms. Arrington, page sixteen of our packet, which is Exhibit Four. Her first paragraph, she says, "Site GO 0109 is considered eligible for listing on the NRHP under Criterion A." Is that the designation that SHPO would be looking at?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood, because it was two different sets of acronyms.
Oh, okay. Lots of acronyms flying around with this project.
Thank you.
Other board members have questions? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and open the public hearing by hearing from the appellant first, the folks who filed the appeal.
Thank you, distinguished board members. My name is Grayson Coney. I am the cultural director with the Tsaiakam Mayadu Indian Tribe, and I'd like at this time to honor our elders that are in the building and to ask permission to speak before them. Okay. Can I say? Thank you. United Auburn is in the house. Our concerns have gone on for many years, longer than the conception of a church landing on this property. As you know, early on, some of my foundational fact included arrest records for people looting the site. People in this county for years and years and years have known that what we call pot hunters have been looting this site. So our Indian community was aware of the importance of this village site containing a burial ground. I'd like to refer to Exhibit Four right now, Cindy Arrington's, her declaration of what she feels is happening there. And in the second paragraph, she says, "Evidence of historic modern disturbance is abundant throughout the entire extent of the site." And later on, she goes to say that if there were a site there, it would fall further west. Any bit further west lands you in Clipper Creek. There was what's called a K-three channel change, where they took Clipper Creek and moved it to the west and north of the freeway. And they filled in the creek and the bedrock mortars that are there. The K-three channel change as-built plan sits in the county offices in the great big book next to the relinquishment book. And you open it up, and it shows the bedrock milling station underneath the freeway. No one else could find that. It's county records. We have it here. For fifteen years, I did mass grating as a superintendent of land development for Del Webb. I have moved dirt in all types of easement situations and never have I stockpiled nor retrieved dirt that wasn't mine from off of our boundaries. Ms. Arrington goes on to state that during the constructive construction of Interstate 80 and the old Highway 40, that the dirt was pushed into this site from the village. And if I could go back to the photograph and show you that the church wants to go right here, the burial ground is right there, the old creek is right here, the bedrock mortar is right here. There's also a bedrock mortar right there, which is seventy feet off of Neil's Road. There's pit house sites all up in here. The village proper of the Hawnosum Soka is this area here and includes a, here's the ballpark, includes an old stone quarry, which is just to the west of Home Plate. When I was a boy, I used to ride my bicycle through these pit houses, jumping them. They plowed them all under when they built the ballpark. This Hawnosum Soka is a circle like this. It's, there is no limit to the cultural aspect of this site to be found on the site. You have to get way up here to find the limits of this cultural site. You have to get way over here to find the limits. So when any odd number of auger units were dug in here, out of all of them, only two lacked cultural deposits. Only two. I may be wrong, it might have been three, but I believe it says two. That's a lot of dig anywhere on the site and find something possibilities. Our burial sites, our cry grounds more proper, were arranged linear, about seventy feet long and about forty feet wide, and they were, had brush enclosures on the two long ends. And once a year, there would be a mourning ceremony held on these. And people that died that previous year were either cremated and interned or simply interned in the burial ground. When Ms. Arrington claims that nothing was found in situ or put together, like human bones, one touching the other, the reason being is that when our ancestors die, whether we're going to inter them or cremate them and inter them, we dig a hole in the ground. We pull those from before them out, and then we put them back in. Every time, that body is going within the same place, within that seventy-foot area. So for her to find portions of human beings, but only portions and nothing connected, makes perfect sense. That's how it happens. We had burial people that were paid to intern corpses and the ashes of our fallen. And they dug holes and put every bone they took out back in. And so you're not going to find an intact burial unless it's of a great age or during, for instance, a type of culture that practiced that type of interment and moved and made large burial grounds. Some of these actually do exist in Placer County, but in my opinion, this isn't one of them. For her to tell us that all the soil was pushed there from the freeway, well, for me, being an expert in mass grating, I need some foundational fact to prove that, because I've walked the perimeter fifty times, and I've seen with my eye what cuts and fills there are. And I can assure you, neither Highway 40 nor Interstate 80 put soil on that piece of property. And I would debate that with anyone willing to debate it, if they can show me foundational fact. Therefore, the letter received from Cindy Arrington, I think, should be dismissed in all the paragraphs containing the verbiage of the site being further to the west and being pushed onto the property. I don't see it. I'd be the first to say so, because in my defense, I would say those are still our relatives, whether they were pushed there or not. The site goes on to hold historic portions, where there was a historic house right in this location here. This location has the very least amount of top soil left, although they still can't dig an auger unit and not find chips and arrowheads. So that goes something about the depth. Ms. Arrington states that it was probably to the west, when in truth, the habitation sites were up out of this meadow, which is an alluvium from the hills surrounding it and is very wet beneath. That's why we have valley oaks growing here. If you look on all the plant reports and such, they state valley oaks. Well, you can drive many miles at this elevation and not find another valley oak unless the type of soil is an alluvium that has a water table below it. This isn't a place to raise children, because their feet would always be wet. It stays wet too long. And so you come up slope, and you build your pit houses, and your children are healthy and their feet are dry. So directly across the street are the habitation sites. Below us in this area is where all the men worked, it's where they processed materials in this valley. Since it has an alluvium, Ms. Arrington dug, I was the monitor on the site, by the way, so I was there for every hole dug. When we did the auger units, she hit sterile soil and said, oh, that's it. Well, the way that meadow was established is because of the nature of the soil of the hills above it, it erodes quickly down into it. There could have been events in the past that could have easily laid down a foot, a foot and a half of alluvium over existing middens, existing cultural features, even historic features can be under some of this. So in the tribe's belief that these sterile soils that were hit, we don't believe it. We believe that they have to go a little lower to find the antiquities of this. Hawnosum Soka and the Hawnosum Ustoo burial ground, from words from our elders are told that that was, this was one of... that that was, this was one of the most important and one of the oldest village sites in all this area. So to hit a simple lens of sterile soil isn't enough to stop your research. We believe that there should be a Phase III archaeology here, and there could very well be. Once it's determined the eligibility on the places of National Historic Register, they're going to ask for these things. And so it would be the tribe's wishes that we slow down a little bit and that we look at this. As we know, the lead is the Army Corps of Engineers on this project, and believe me, they've definitely downshifted. And they're taking a good, hard look at this. As one of the members of the Army Corps mentioned to me, they have a project almost identical to this in San Diego. And there is a drainage, just like this one, that has to be put in a pipe. This drainage actually can hold an overflow of the Boardman Canal. In the event of a rupture downstream, they can release the water here. And the Army Corps of Engineers is aware of the size of this pipe that needs to go in here if it's going to go underground. In San Diego, they had to put in a pipe just like this near a cultural site, and they hit a bone. I said, "Okay, well, stop, dig it up, see if we can find." Three and a half years later, another fifty feet down the trench, they're still going teaspoon at a time finding bones. And she stated to me, she will never do this again. We have this possibility happening because this drainage right here is within seventy feet. Oh, I'm done?
Do you have an idea how much more time you might need in order to make your points?
Well, there's quite a few people here to speak today. I can close right now.
What I'd like to do is have you, representing the appellant, go ahead and conclude your remark. We'll hear from the applicants, and then those folks that are here to speak may speak after the applicant has made their case, okay?
Okay. Well, short and simple. If I were to go dig up any one of your grandparents' graves, I would hit the papers. It would be a big to-do. Here, we're telling you, people are coming to dig in our graves, and I believe it's up to you to make that headline. The other one is, where on earth in Placer County is the last burial ground that I'm going to next to preserve? And if you could point it out to me, I'll be right down the road there and I'll help get it through. This is a sacred place to us. And there's one last thing, and the seventy-foot easement that has been proposed for the cultural easement is not large enough. Our burial cry grounds were seventy feet long. The chairman believes that we need to add another thirty feet to that, and this would encompass quite a more, a few more of those valley oaks. And then this way, when we bring people out there, we will not have to stand atop of the ones that went before us to do our ceremony, which is very, very disrespectful. So the seventy-foot easement that's been proposed is not acceptable to us, and we're asking for thirty feet more. And this would also enclose the oaks. It would keep it in the shade. Having a bumper and a drainage grate within ten feet of burials, in my opinion, is bad news. We shouldn't be doing that. Also, if this project goes through, our traditional cultural property, our TCP, is the view from that burial ground as well as the ground itself. And we would ask that everything be done to block the view of the church from the burial ground. So we would like another thirty feet on the easement. We would actually like the project not to go on at all. We would entertain fundraising for the church. It may take many years, but heck, we'll buy it from them. We'll buy them a new piece of property. This is something that ought to be done. To dig this project and build it with a teaspoon, with monitors leaning over your shoulder the entire way, stop and go, stop and go. And again, as I told you, in my past as a superintendent of land development for Del Webb, I know a little bit about the speed of construction projects being the feasibility of them. This is going to be the slowest project ever hit Placer County, once they bring in the equipment. Thank you. And on behalf of Don Reitberg, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Can I hear from the applicant, please? Representative of the church that would like to make their remarks?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Cindy Arrington. I'm the archaeologist. I'd like to discuss some of the remarks made by Mr. Grayson. He spoke of the current arrest records that he'd mentioned. There are no current arrest records. I myself went to the sheriff and the medical examiner. They have no such records. Cave Creek, he's talking about being under the freeway with the BRM. That is my entire point, that if a site were to have existed there, it exists farther out under what is now, was 40 and is now Highway 80. He talks about BRMs, other BRMs, quarries, pit houses, finding, none of those have ever been recorded. No archaeologists has ever recorded them. The tribes have never had them recorded. They've never had them documented. It's simply Mr. Grayson saying that they're here, there, and yonder. There is ethnography from Lizzie Enos from back in the sixties that says there is a village site. It is south of what is now Colfax, in a valley. Between there and here, there are over twelve valleys. So it could be, it could not be. We do have a documented site further south, back down Highway 80, that demonstrates everything they mentioned, quarries, pit houses, BRMs. Now, it's not uncommon. They're pretty prolific through the area. Cry area, he speaks of that it was their tradition to have people go and dig up their ancestors piece by piece and put them back. I not ever read that in any ethnography, but I can tell you, as a trained osteologist, which is someone who deals a lot with human remains, that what we found in the area known as the environmental sensitive area or the ESA is not the remains of a continual big, dig up a burial and put it back, dig up a burial and put it back. It's the remains of complete and utter disassociation. When you find chunks of asphalt and railroad spikes at the same level that you find a human tooth, it speaks that there's been multiple disturbances there for multiple reasons. Not just the looters, which unfortunately, that is true. The area has always been known as a looting site, which is greatly unfortunate, mostly for its glass historic beads, which we found almost six hundred of in the area. Now, as far as the ESA area bumping out seventy feet, I feel that it's more than significant and more than enough. If I may, not causing it, now here we go. So the fragmented human remains, of which no piece is really larger than two inches so that-
Speak up just a little louder, would you please?
I'm sorry. Of the fragmented human remains that were found, they're all found right up adjacent to the property line and nowhere else on the site at all. They're just up adjacent to that property line, and that's where the looters were. We radiated out from the looter's pit to ensure that we would capture anything. So if you have fragmented remains just abutting that line, and then you come out seventy feet, and we have auger holes all within that seventy feet that show absolutely no distinction of human remains, we do have some lithic scatter, which are small pieces of debutage that would break off while they were making points or scrapers or bifaces or tools as such. But again, if you look at the topography of this area, this is a slope, and everything from here drains down. As Grayson said, the area is very shallow in this area here. So we didn't find anything up in this area that was more than about fifteen centimeters below depth because it's surface scatter that's come down. The area is, has great flooding episodes, as Grayson has stated. So a lot of it has just come down with the creek. As far as not going deep enough and hitting what we call sterile soil, that's true. We do hit sterile soil, and then we go beyond sterile soil. Because there have been instances where, particularly in an area like this where flooding can occur, that you have a deposition from a flood episode, and then below that, you have a continuation. However, we went on to one sterile level to ensure that we would not- In many of these, we went ninety centimeters deep. We went, in some cases, twenty and thirty centimeters below our first indication of sterile soil. So I feel that we've done due diligence on this site. The monitoring, Grayson speaks of stop and go. I think our monitoring plan is solid. It allows for where you can, if something is found, we stop. And again, only osteologists will be monitoring the site. Again, that are those that are most familiar with human remains, even in their most fragmentary sense. So if a monitor sees something, then yes, in that area, it is stopped. They're asked to move off, a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet, whatever the case may be, and continue on there until that area can be assessed. So if Grayson continues with the, it's going to be the longest project in history, I don't think so. We as archaeologists, monitors, and osteologists are very well attuned at working with construction equipment, construction personnel. We also have, which no one's mentioned, a training session for all construction workers on this as to what our protocol is, how it will be done, how they will respond to the archaeological monitors out there. We have complete support with that from the owners, the church itself. So all construction personnel will be trained on how to work with monitors, what can and cannot be done if something is found. And I will answer any questions that you have.
Board members, have any questions? Seeing none, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. At this time, we will take public comment on this item. Many members of the public wish to address the board. This be the time to do so. Like with the last hearing, feel free to queue up so that we can just go ahead and take folks as they come.
Good morning, or good afternoon, whatever it is now. April Moore, Nisnan Maadu. The former speaker was talking specifically about information gathered from Lizzie Enos. That is my great-grandmother. So I'm very familiar with this geography and this specific area. I've grown up in the area. And when she referred to bone fragments, it was a very common practice for the Nisanon and very, a lot of the different Maadu groups to cremate. So you would, at one point or another, find a lot of bone fragments. My other question is, I have no privy to the report, and I also do archaeological technician work and Native American monitor on different projects, including NID. When the coroner, I'm assuming the coroner was notified, what was his report? Whether she's an osteological archaeologist or not, the coroner has to be notified, and the indigenous population in the area who are on that Native American Heritage list should be notified because there's a specific ceremony and protocol for re-interment. We do not advocate anybody taking those bones and removing them from the site. That is sacrilegious on our religious beliefs. And along with US Forest Service, NID, and PG&E, who is in the same consensus as a lot of us Native Americans are from this area, all artifacts are to be replaced immediately. And if there's any human remains, they are to be judged as such, and people are supposed to be contacted. Now, I'm on that Native American Heritage list. I haven't had no idea as to the amount of remains that were recovered. That's a question I'm posing. And as Mr. Coney said before, that would be very disrespectful to anybody to go in, dig up their lineal ancestors. So, you know, I'm going to go back to the freedom of religion. That's been violated in our, as far as I'm concerned, in my religious practice. And I'm going to stop right there because I can go on, and I don't want to say anything that I shouldn't say. Thank you.
Thank you. No, hold, hold, please. Go ahead, ma'am. You'd step forward, I'm assuming, to speak. Anybody else wish to address the board on this item? Go ahead, and if you could, come on up and grab a couple of seats up in the front. Go ahead, ma'am. Name and address, if you could, if you please.
My name is Vicky Kuklow.
Would you pull the microphone down toward you just a touch? Thank you so much.
How's that?
That much better.
All right. I'm Vicky Kuklow. I do go to Celebration Church. And I'm American, and I'm American Indian. I am one-quarter Indian. And I want to honor you guys, absolutely. There is no question that this is-
Address your comments to the board, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I understand that this is about sacred things. There's no argument, there's no buts on that. My question is, like the last lady, I have also a question. I don't have any answers. My question is, because of the sacredness, because of their knowledge that this was a very sacred ground, and they've known it for a long time, when we purchased the land, and the land was in escrow, and we did it in good faith, and a contract was made during that time over a year, why did someone not come forward? There was no desire here to ever desecrate anybody's property. That would be the last thing we'd want to do. So Mr. Grayson, I understand, even came up and he extended the hand to our pastor and said, "Good words. I'm going to be, I'm glad to work with you." What was that all about during that time of consideration during the escrow period? Anyway, we did this in good faith. It's a contract. We paid our money. We didn't want to insult anybody. And that's, it's just a question. Where were they during that time? We would have loved to have heard from them. It would have been, saved us a lot of heartache in them, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, actually, ma'am, if I, what I'm going to do is I'm going to allow the public to speak, and then I'm going to ask if the applicant or the appellant have any final remarks before we bring it back to the board, okay? So if you just hold on a sec, and we'll continue with members of the public. Yes, please. And the appellant and the applicant were each given a longer period of time. We are now back to the three minutes for the public speakers during this part. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name is Galen Halbert. I was a Placer County employee for sixteen years. I retired as a program manager at the Placer County Probation Department. I'm here to support the church. I attended the planning commission meeting. Ms. Arrington's presentations there were very thorough. The planning commission members discussed and asked questions, and I ask and request that you support their decision, which was a five to nothing decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? And then if there are other folks who are interested in speaking, if you could go ahead and make your way up, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you so much for giving me, giving me my three minutes. My name is Cedric Lee. I'm the pastor of Celebration Community Fellowship in Medivista. Our church is about to celebrate our ten-year anniversary in October. We've been meeting in ten years, for ten years, in, at the Placer Hills Elementary School. We have a portable church full of very faithful people. You've heard the story of how long this project has been going on for us. And I'd like to reiterate the question that Vicky mentioned because what she, with Mr. Coney, what you've heard is what we've heard both in the North Auburn MAC meeting, which we were, our project was approved unanimously. Then he gave the same lecture at the planning commission. We were approved, our project again was approved unanimously. And today, he's given the, basically, the same lecture once again. He said something significant at the very beginning. He said, "For a very long time, before the church even came, we knew the site was culturally significant. We knew it was a sacred place." If that was the case, then why would they allow our purchase to go through? We had a significantly long escrow period because we made our purchase conditional upon whether we felt confident that we would be able to build. When we initially placed an offer on the property, we found out that the property didn't perk. And that would have been something that would have stopped us from buying the property. But then we were, through miraculous means, we were able to be, to be, that's what I'm looking for, we were approved to use an environmentally new septic system. So our escrow period was way longer than normal because we wanted to wait and find out. It wasn't- It wasn't until after we had closed and had bought the property that we were initially approached by Mr. Coney. And even then, his approach was, "We're happy that you guys bought the property, and we just want to, we want to work with you." And that tone over the period, over the period of the last three years, has changed gradually. To today, he's all over the place. First, it's, "We want to stop the project." Then, "We want to slow down the project." Then, he's attacking Cindy's credibility as a professional osteologist. Then, it's the trench. Then, it's the, you know, enlarging the ESA. So what is the appeal based on? That's the question that I would have today. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sir? And how many other folks are going to want to address the board after this gentleman? Okay, thank you. I see a couple. All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Glenn Lowe. I'm a member of Celebration, and just want to say that honoring history is, you know, very important, and learning from history is important, and so I think we need to honor history. But more important than that is applying what we learn from history to our lives and stuff like that. So, and that's what Celebration Community Fellowship is all about. That's the, that's why we're Celebration Community Fellowship. We're about the community. We've demonstrated, you know, many times how we want to help this community, and by, this will be a great base for putting our church on where we can help this community. We've done things like, we've done concerts and helped them have an anesthesia machine in the hospital. We just recently did a concert where we helped the Courage House. It's a home to rescue women that are sold in sex slaves, as sex slaves. And we have an outreach in Colfax, where on Monday mornings, we, a group of us work with the What Would Jesus Do organization, and we help feed the homeless and the needy up in Colfax. And we've helped with, you know, different concerts all over this place. And we really have a heart for this community. It's just one of our main purposes. There's, you know, we get together and we pray about this, you know, what this community needs. And so it's, you know, this church has a really community-minded heart. And I just want to say that, you know, by putting this here, we're in a, it's a very good central location where we can reach out and touch all aspects of this community and really have a helping hand with this community. So I just ask for your approval on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members. My name is David Frank. I, too, am a member of Celebration Community Fellowship. I'm also a lawyer here in Auburn. I've been practicing lawyer for 25 years. I'm a real estate lawyer. And I've heard the discussions that Mr. Haas has given about the process that has been embarked upon here. And clearly, the whole purpose of this process, the SEQA process, is to evaluate the environmental impacts of this proposed project. And a part of that process involves looking what can be done to mitigate any potential negative effects. And I think an exhaustive approach here has been put in place to that end, to protect the rights of this particular tribe, their concerns about historically what has happened on this site. And to stop this project, I think, would be a huge mistake. It's incredibly difficult these days to get anything done through the government. And to stop a church like this, that has done so much good in this community and will continue to do so, is not the right way to go. The right way to go is to put in the mitigated steps to help mitigate any effect on this. I think a very relevant aspect is the fact that the tribes have not done anything with this property. They haven't tried to purchase it. Even to date, there's been no effort by the tribe to purchase it from the church. And, you know, there's a doctrine in the law where you sleep on your rights, where you fail to take action, the law is not going to reward that. And I would hope that they, that this board would not reward, you know, this tribe for delaying various options they had to either buy the property or take other measures to keep the property from development through purchasing the property. And I would just encourage this board to remind them that you have steps in place, mitigated steps in place, to minimize any impact. There is an area being created to protect what may be environmentally sensitive here, and that should be sufficient for purposes of your obligations under SEQA to consider the impacts of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there folks who want to comment on this? Please, go ahead, step forward. How many other folks do I have now? I have this gentleman. Anybody else after this gentleman? You will, the applicant and the appellant will both be allowed to summarize, but I'm seeing this gentleman as the last member of the public. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to just introduce myself. My name is Marcos Guerrero. I have a master's degree in archaeology. I've been practicing archaeology throughout the United States for the last 12 years, about eight years here in California. I'm the cultural resource specialist for United Auburn Indian Community. I'm a registered professional archaeologist, so I'm very familiar with laws. First of all, I'd like to start by saying that Hau Nosam Ustu is a contributing element or a feature of Hau Nosam Soka. So that's important to consider. I'd also like you to consider that a mitigated negative declaration is also a document related to SEQA. And having worked for the Department of Water Resources, I'm familiar with the mitigated neg deck, as I am with an environmental impact report. And I would suggest that the board please consider the difference between those two documents. I'd also like to point out that the boundaries of the site have been inaccurately plotted. As you can see, the boundary, some of the locations where the auger pits were found positive were not included within the site boundary. I also want to state that the boundaries for the feature or the ustu part of the site have not been adequately determined along the southeast, southwest, south, and northeast corners. I'd like to say that the Native American consultation process, there was no good-faith attempt or good-faith effort by the part of the archaeologists or the Native American Heritage Commission. And I'd also like to recommend a phase-three evaluation. Our data recovery program be proposed, as well as all artifacts recovered be reinterned inside. Thank you.
Okay. And then what we'll do is, we will hear in reverse order. This time, we will hear the applicant and then wrap up with the appellant. So if the applicant and the appellant would, and this time, I'd like you to try to limit your comments to the three minutes, please, as we wrap up.
Yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to address Mrs. Moore's comment regarding notification, and it also speaks to Marcos' comment regarding Native American notification. There's a very prescribed process that goes on. When you're digging an archaeological site and investigating it and human remains are found, first you call the county coroner, which was done. Then the Native American Heritage Commission is called. It is their sole discretion as to who they will choose as the most likely descendant for that particular site. In this case, Katie Sanchez, and I have a letter from Miss Sanchez stating so, she chose Don Ryberg's group as the most likely descendant. So any further conversation regarding human remains goes strictly through Mr. Ryberg. Ms. Moore was actually at the site after we'd found human remains, so she did know that they had been located. Her concerns about prayer and reinternment, we've not gotten there yet, because we haven't gotten past this point, though I have spoke personally with Mr. Ryberg and Pastor Lee, who represents his congregation. They are in agreement with Ms. Moore, and Dr., excuse me, Don Ryberg is in agreement that she be able to give a blessing to the remains when they are reinterned, as exactly to where they'll be reinterned is not public knowledge for anyone. But they have agreed upon a place that both Mr. Ryberg, as the MLD, and the Celebration Community Fellowship are comfortable with. So that's done. Marcos spoke regarding significance. The National Register significance will determine that. That's exactly what the National Register does. Part of our mitigation for this is to see if the site is eligible. We gather all the information, we give it to SHPO, and they either concur or not as to our recommendation that it's eligible. So those will be addressed by the National Register process. Native American consultation, again, I have a list of names that were given to me from the Native American Heritage Commission. Every one of those Native Americans were contacted. The results are in my report. They were given a letter, and they were also called to see if they had concerns, what they wanted to do. So all that, that's documented. So we were diligent in our effort for outreach for the Native American community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of all the auger holes that were dug on this site, they're about so big around. She covered the whole place. Two of them came up empty. That's a lot of artifacts on the ground. When you can pick a spot, stick your finger in the ground, and pull up an artifact, it's a big site. April Moore didn't go into much about her grandmother, who documented this site as Hau Nosam Soka, Hau Nosam Ustu. She knows very well of the site and what it contained and what it is. She saw every tractor that was parked out there on the freeway while they were building it. Had conversations with her earlier about this. The burial ground is just a small feature in the whole of the site, and it can be proven with a short field trip within 150 yards of that burial ground in any direction where the majority of the occupation sites were. That it floods and that there's sterile soils and that below those sterile soils are occupational sites is a given. There's basically 11,000 years of occupation, hit or miss, in this whole region. And these events can happen quickly. When they start digging infrastructures, sewer, water, electric, they're going to bust through these sterile lenses, and they're going to break into a big can of worms. I can quote a site called Skyrocket, for instance, that would, this site has everything going for it that that site has. And it was 11 feet down, they hit artifacts from 7,000 to 11,000 years old. Who would have thought? I am a trained tracker from my elders, and I look at the ground differently than everyone in this room. And I have an attachment with the ground and a feeling that I get, what we call the spirit that moves through all things, what this side of the room may call the Holy Spirit. And when your hair stands up on the back of your neck and you get a feeling like, you know, it's time to do something, I understand why. And why weren't they told years and years ago, remember I told you I was riding my bike through the pithouses? Well, when they built the freeway, I knew that site was there, but man, I was 11 years old. What am I going to do about that? When they're in escrow, I'm at home raising kids, I'm going to work and working. I have no idea who the church is, not until that crucifix appeared in the field and it said "future home of," did I contact Cedric Lee. And Cedric Lee said, "We'll be very respectful, and we'll help you in each and every way." And then he said that my attitude declined from there. Three weeks after my appointment with Cedric Lee, where he vowed that he won't do a thing until we get it straight, he took a tractor out there and ripped the entire upper portion of the site with a tractor. I called the fishing game, and I called the Placer County sheriffs to try and get something done, and they finally just stopped with the tractor and left. That's when I started coasting downhill, you might say. Thank you, and thank you, elders, for being here today.
Okay. Any board members have any, well, first of all, staff, any final, any concluding thoughts, comments at this point?
No, I'll wait to hear what your questions are.
Okay. Board members have questions, either staff, the applicant, or the appellant. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I just have some clarifications. If I understand correctly, when bone fragments were found, the coroner was contacted. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's documented in the report that Ms. Arington prepared.
Okay. And then the Native American Heritage Committee was also contacted at that point?
The Native American Heritage Committee was contacted immediately following the phone call to the coroner. The coroner was unavailable. Native American Heritage Commission conveyed that Don Ryberg was the most likely descendant. He was contacted immediately, and I think by phone conversation, more or less approved the continuation of work on site.
Okay. So Mr. Ryberg, more or less approved, you're saying?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Sorry, I lost the thread there a little bit. On these bone fragments, I'm not an osteologist, I'm not an archaeologist, I think. I took one class in college, and I remember very little about it, frankly. But is there some way to identify if these bone fragments are Native American, Anglo, some 49 Goldliner?
I think, Ms. Arington, it'd be better to ask that question, too. But I do, there are tests that can be done, there are forensic tests that can be done, without the coroner being present and the remains being removed, but being held by the property owner. They're available for review, certainly could be tested forensically.
Could you address if that was done, if we know to whom these bone fragments belong?
One second, ma'am. One second. Is your question of her at this point?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, when the bone fragments were retrieved from the units, we immediately look at them. There are metal, there are markers on bones that will tell you whether they're human or animal. So first, we discern that. And there's a lot more animal than human out there, but the human ones that we find then we set aside. Now typically, you need bones larger than, you know, a half an inch to an inch to discern, if you will, ethnicity, whether it was a 49er or Euro-American or a Native American. We don't have any that or that size. They're all very, very fragmented. We do have some teeth, and typically on teeth, there's very good markers as to whether or not they're Native American, based on what they call the shape, which is shovel shape, and then also the amount of wear on the enamel of the teeth. Unfortunately, we only retrieved roots of teeth. So there's not enough left to discern on any level as to whether it's Native American, Caucasian, Euro-American, or what. All we know for sure is that they are, in fact, human.
Okay. Thank you. Again, getting back to Exhibit 4, and this is for you, Jerry. It says that it is considered eligible for listing on the NHR, excuse me, NRHP, I tried to call it the National Hot Rod Association, they're permitted, under criterion A. What does that do as it relates, or what does that mean as it relates to Condition 36, which says, prior to any construction activities on the site? So I assume that means grading as well. You can't move a teaspoonful of dirt, you know, to use Grayson's terminology. "The owner shall submit an application to the State Historic Office of Preservation, SHPO, for nomination of the site into the National Register of Historic Places." Has that been done?
That has not been done yet. That will be done following the hearing, before any work is going to be conducted on site. There are four criteria essentially for eligibility in the National Register for Historic Places. One of them that she cites here is that the site is potentially, or is significant to Native Americans in the area. So most of the other criteria related to whether or not the site is, in fact, unique, represents something that you won't find in other locations, associated with the lives of persons that are significant in the past, and those sorts of things. In this case, we don't have much evidence to suggest all that stuff historically, but we do know that the site is important to local Native Americans, and therefore, it satisfies one of the criteria for eligibility. The next step would be to have SHPO, submit application to SHPO to determine whether or not the site is, in fact, eligible for recordation. And if it is, there may be a phase-three. There may be additional survey work that gets done on the site.
So, just so I'm clear, just merely being eligible for SHPO does not require a phase-three?
That's correct. It does not.
It would have to be the SHPO finding that it was of historical significance?
Right. And they're not necessarily the same thing, as I was informed this morning. The recordation of the site could include excavation. A phase-three is really just, it's more intensive pedestrian survey than the phase-two. So they would do it at closer transects. But the phase, the phase-three is not the same thing as the actual recordation of the site. And that's actually documenting the site and acknowledging that the site is historic and it belongs in the register.
Okay. And following up on Number 36 as well in our package and the conditions, the second sentence is, "Determination of eligibility, or lack thereof, must be received prior to approval of the improvement plans from Placer County." What does determination of eligibility then trigger if it is indeed- What does determina, determination of eligibility then trigger if it is indeed determined to be eligible?
If it is determined to be eligible, we would defer to National Register of Historic Places to give us guidelines for what that means. We don't really know at this point what that would entail. Most likely it would include some recordation, excavation, further excavation of site and recordation, but we, not being able to speak on their behalf, would defer to them.
Okay. So one outcome of that may be a requirement for a phase three study?
Absolutely could.
And again, Jerry, I don't know if you're the right person to address this too, because this is probably not really your-
Probably not the right person in any circumstance.
That's why I like working with you. Maybe I'll ask Mr. Guerrero if you wouldn't mind. It sounds like you have some experience in this sort of situation where there's been test pits dug, there's been augers dug, they've pulled cultural artifacts up. I'm gonna ask you for just a, you know, your own opinion here, that's all I'm asking for. Is based on what you saw at this site, based on what you read, because I believe you were able to review the archaeological study, is it your expectation that SHPO will, one, find this to be a cultural site of importance and two, require a phase three study?
Yes, it is our opinion that the site is significant and will be determined eligible. But I, but there is fatal flaws in the phase two report. Like I mentioned, the boundaries have not been determined accurately and there's insufficient subsurface data for the feature that they're trying to preserve in the ESA.
Okay. And just so I understand, that's essentially the argument that Mr. Coney is making as well, that Grayson Coney is making, that the phase two was insufficient. But a phase three would address that and would remedy those deficiencies, in your opinion?
A phase three would be a data recovery program, right, where it would mitigate for those impacts.
Uh huh.
But like Mr. Jerry Haas mentioned, it does have to be determined eligible by the SHPO first.
And so if it's not determined eligible by SHPO and we do decide today to deny the appeal, what does that do? Where does that leave us?
That's a good question.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
All right. Other board members have questions? I'm sorry, go ahead Supervisor Holmes.
I just had one. What's the possibility of this church building this in Meta Vista? Why wouldn't you build it in Meta Vista and not down in this particular site? Because of the price of the land, it was easier to purchase here? If you've been meeting in Meta Vista for 10 years, it sounds like your congregation is, is mostly from the Meta Vista city or whatever we wanna call it.
Right. A number of years ago, we sought to purchase a piece of property in Meta Vista to build. And going through the entitlement process with the county, it was determined that it was within a 100-year flood plain and so we weren't allowed to build there. And there aren't any other pieces of property available. This particular piece of property is just a couple of miles from where we, where we're located right now, so our move would only be a very, a very short one. And I would also say too, that for, for the first five years of our church, because we met at Placer Hill School, which at that time was, was in operation, part of our lease agreement with the school was that we would be looking for a piece of property. And so for the first five years of our church, we continually looked from Colfax to Auburn, all the way up and down, you know, those areas for a piece of property, so.
I have a question from representative of tribe, do it please. When, when this particular property went on the market, was there any interest expressed by the tribe in purchasing this? Was an offer ever submitted?
When the Celebration Community Church purchased the property, we were not conscious of that happening. We had no idea anyone was buying a piece of property.
Let me clarify. Are you saying that nobody knew that it was available for sale?
From our tribe?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, so it wasn't, there was no signage on the property and there was no-
No sir, no sir. And getting back earlier, we own a thrift store, not a casino. We don't have the funds to go on those types of endeavors. But when it comes to our cultural properties, we'll make every move we can to try and preserve.
Except you didn't submit an offer on the property when it was available for sale?
We didn't know it was for sale.
Okay. All right, thank you. Supervisor Montgomery, your light still on, do you have another question?
Yeah, I had a couple of other questions. First I wanted to state that whether or not it was the moral obligation of the Ch'akam to say, "Hey, this is a historical site and we have some issues on it," it was not their legal obligation or their duty to do so. That was probably something that the realtor should have disclosed to you if, if that person did not. It is apparently fairly well-known as a historical site in Placer County. I first heard about it at a flea market in Colfax where the guy next to me is selling old Dutch ovens and frying pans, said, "Oh yeah, we used to go loot that place all the time, everybody knows it's an Indian area." And I said, "Oh, didn't really wanna hear that, but thank you." You know, so I would say that it's, you know, I just wanna reiterate, it's not the responsibility of the Ch'akam tribe to say, "Hey, this site may have issues." That was something that your real estate agent should have, should have disclosed to you. Having said that, I think I've had a number of meetings with Mr. Grayson and with Chairman I have, I have heard the original proposal morph from, "Hey, we wanna protect an area" to, "Hey, we really want the church just to go away and find another place to build this." I think the original proposal is a legitimate proposal. I think the idea of the church going away and just finding some new spot and turning the property over to the Ch'akam or to whoever is not a reasonable expectation for anyone to have. If I understand this correctly, SHPO is going to be asked to make a determination on this. They will either determine that it has historical value and therefore a phase three will almost 100% likely be required, or they will determine that it does not have historical value and therefore no phase three would be required and what we have is currently adequate. I'm comfortable moving ahead with this project on that basis. So it would be my recommendation that we do a couple of things. We deny the appeal in front of us today. I would like to look at adding a condition, that if it's not already in here, that we screen the 70-foot area, as Grayson suggested, so that they can't see the church and the church can't see them. You know, plant some more valley oaks, whatever needs to be done on that. And I really wanna make sure that people are very clear on what condition number 36 means, because that's really critical to this. To me, what this is saying is that nothing can happen on this site until we get that SHPO determination. And that what then happens on this site is contingent solely on that SHPO determination. It is not a county issue, it is not a church issue, it is not a tribal issue at this point, it's a SHPO issue. And they will tell us how and when to move forward from there. Am I pretty clear in understanding what that means?
You are. As far as the condition, something along the lines of screening in a form approved by the Development Review Committee shall be installed surrounding the environmentally sensitive area, wherever that easement is, is determined to be on the site. You're talking about within the project boundaries, not along the outside?
Yeah, within the project boundaries, so that they can't see the church, as I recall, it's a semicircle.
Right.
So along the edge of the semicircle.
Within the project boundaries, there, okay.
So unless anyone on this board has anything else that they would like to add to this, I would recommend that we deny the appeal, adopt the findings. Page seven, thank you. Glenn's always here to keep track of me. We deny the appeal and we adopt the findings under SEQA. Tony, do I need to read these out?
No, and the findings for the minor use permit.
And the findings for the minor use permit with the conditions as discussed and amended today.
Okay, that was the motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Holmes. Any comments or questions under discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call, please. Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockholm?
No.
Wygant?
Yeah.
Holmes?
Yes.
You learn. All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to our 11 o'clock timed item, which is- I'd like to just work right through them.
Okay.
If they're not staying for the remaining items, if they would please, go ahead and head on out so we can continue on with our agenda. And for the department heads that are waiting, we're gonna go ahead and take the timed item and the remaining department head items without breaking for lunch in between. So those department heads that are queued up, maybe in conference room A, please stick around because we will be moving straight to department head items after we hear this timed item. So with that, this 11 o'clock timed item is also a SEDRA item. This is a public hearing, consider a request for an immediate conversion, and I will just let Warren take it from there.
Good afternoon, Chairman Yuler. Yes, it is afternoon. We're here today as a follow-up to a public hearing that was held on August 10th resulting in a continuance of this item, which was actually continued from March 16th, 2010, at which time the board directed staff to look into a couple of policy issues as it relates to timberland production zones and as it relates to the economic viability of property, as well as to return to the Planning Commission, Ag Commission, and the Weimar Applegate Clipper Gap Municipal Advisory Council. All of this relates to a request from an applicant to conduct an immediate rezon or conversion of land, zone timberland production zone in Placer County to a residential forest 80-acre minimum. To my right, Crystal Jacobson has background information on both the policy issues that the board was interested in, as well as the individual actions and deliberations of those various bodies resulting in our final recommendation here today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Crystal.
Thank you, Lauren. So again, this project is the Bench Creek Rezon with a mitigated negative declaration. Well, that's kind of dark.
Yes. Is that, did you have to use a green background on your slide?
Oh, possibly.
That might be the issue. Is there any way that can be lightened, Greg, or anybody back there? We're not, we're not getting that very clear.
Not that one.
Not that one, yeah. That's right, he knows, he knows what he's doing here. Give him a minute.
Okay.
See if he can take a quick look at your slide.
Well, I'll go through this one slide real quick. The project includes a request from Jack Remington on behalf of Fred Basquen and Jed Parker for an immediate rezoning conversion of timberland production zone to residential forest, combining an 80-acre minimum or a 10-year rollout from the TPZ to residential forest, 80-acre minimum. And then also a modification to a previously approved minor land division, which created three lots. Let me see if I get, get to a map here. Good, thank you. The project is located off of Yankee Jim Road, one mile east of Cannon Way in the Colfax area. It's on the north side of the North Fork American River and between Colfax and the The project site is, the entire site is zoned TPZ, timberland production, and it contains approximately 600 acres. So rezoning exhibit and then an aerial, so that you can see the river right over here on the right. Just to give you some background, this project was continued from August 10th, but prior to that continued from a March 16th board hearing. At that hearing, you received public testimony and then directed staff to present this project, the modified project, to the Ag Commission, the Weimar Applegate, Colfax Municipal Advisory Council, and then the Planning Commission before returning back to your board for further consideration. Your board also directed staff to do some further research on the economic viability of timber harvest operations on smaller TPZ lot sizes. And so accordingly, we're here today to report back to you on that. So I do have some background information on the site and the TPZ zone district that you've heard before, so in the interest of time, I'm just gonna skip that and if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. But real quick, as I noted earlier, this proposal now includes both either an immediate rezoning conversion of the TPZ or a 10-year rollout of TPZ to residential forest. And so quickly, just to offer you the differences between those, the immediate rezoning conversion requires the approval of the State Board of Forestry and it requires your board to make specific findings in order to recommend approval of the immediate conversion to the State Board. The TPZ 10-year rollout is a little bit different in that TPZ owners may elect in any given year to rezon a parcel from its current TPZ zone district to an alternate district through what's called a 10-year rollout process. That process is regulated by the TPZ zoning act and it requires the approval of the county of a rezoning to an alternate zone district. And then if approved, the new zoning district will become effective 10 years from the date of that approval. It does not require specific findings that need to be made to the State Board of Forestry. Some of the issues analyzed and addressed when reviewing this project, we looked at the project's consistency with the general plan and zoning. The project is consistent with the general plan land use designation in that under the Ag, it's an Ag Timberland designation and under that residential development is anticipated. However, the proposal does conflict with the overall intent of the TPZ zone district in that if the projects were approved, it would result in the conversions of lands that have been designated by the state for farmable timber. It is also inconsistent with some policies set forth in the general plan related to forest resources and those policies have been outlined in your staff report package for you. We also looked at the rezoning's consistency with the surrounding zone districts. And I'll go back here to the zoning map. It is consistent with some portions of the site primarily to the south and west and then portions to the east where there are residential zone districts. However, the proposal to rezon would fragment the existing TPZ district in that if it were approved, it would essentially bisect that district. And I have some more information on that further in my presentation. We also looked at land use compatibility and found that the project would likely result in conflicts with surrounding timberland management and production uses, given that adjoining parcels also zone TPZ, may encounter difficulties maintaining their timber harvest operations. I think, as you know, there is an active timber harvest management operation to the north of the property and they do act, take access through this parcel to get to theirs. And that's right up here. And then we looked at the consistency with the, for the immediate rezoning, the consistency with the required findings, required state findings. And after reviewing that, the Planning Commission had determined that those findings could not be made. Finally, a mitigated neg deck, negative declaration was prepared for the projects and impacts were identified. However, those impacts were considered less insignificant with mitigation. That document is contained as an attachment in your staff report on page 364. So then, in addition to that, as directed by your board, we did explore potential impacts of reduced TPZ lot sizes. So in, coming back from the March 16th hearing, what we did is really tried to answer two questions that were brought up. One was, is there a potential to diminish the economic viability of a TPZ operation when a large-sized TPZ area is fragmented? And in answering that question, we consulted with the California Department of Forestry and it is their position that the smaller the parcel, the less focused the landowner will be on maximizing timber production. They also noted that it is their understanding that the intent of the TPZ Act is that managing larger blocks of timberland collectively is seen as superior to individual small, small personal management. And we do have some correspondence from CAL FIRE related to this contained in your, in your staff report package, that's 39, page 398, if you wanted to take a look at that. Second question had to do with, what are the economic, or are there any economic viability or land management consequences to TPZ lands if the TPZ minimum lot size was reduced? So as it stands right now, under the zoning ordinance, TPZ lands are required to maintain a 160-acre minimum lot size. So your board asked the question of, were there any consequences if that size was reduced? In answering that question, we also consulted the California Department of Forestry and it was their position that as the parcel size gets smaller, timber management becomes less viable. In addition to that, we consulted with some forestry professionals that had indicated that it was appropriate to link the TPZ, it may be appropriate, to link the TPZ parcel size to the site class of the individual TPZ parcels in terms of determining its viability. TPZ parcels in terms of determining its viability. So for example, smaller sizes... Smaller parcels may be more appropriate on properties that have a site class that is the most productive. Site classes range between five... One and five, with one being the most productive. And I do have some site class maps I'll get to here in just a minute. In fact, I'm going to go there now. So this actually is just a map of all the TPZ properties in the county that we had made up. There are approximately 349 parcels in the county that are zoned TPZ, and with about 28 different property owners. These are the property owners listed over here. The Bunch Creek property you can see over here is certainly the furthest. It appears to the west in terms of the properties in Placer County that is zoned TPZ. It is also one of the lowest in elevation. This map here is a timberland production by acreage of zone and acreage of parcel. And I did this just so you can see the typical size of a kind of a TPZ zoning area. So these... This is the Bunch Creek property right here, and it's... That whole pod area that you see, the whole zoning area, is about 1,200 acres. So if this property were rezoned, it would fragment this area, leaving about a 600-acre piece up here, and then 120 right down here to the side of that. These areas here, the quadrants that you see, are approximately 600 acres.
Just quickly, what is the zoning surrounding, as you referred to it, the pod area there?
On this side here?
Yeah, all the way around. I mean, what...
A lot of residential zoning. I could go back to the zoning map I have, if you'd like.
No, I'm just looking at that because you just made the comment that you... Staff believes that the rezon of this to residential would fragment the TPZ zoning?
Correct. You have one area of TPZ that the Bunch Creek is a part of.
Right.
The Bunch Creek property. And if that were rezoned, it would split that area into two. You'd have one small TPZ parcel that would be 120, which would be off the... You know, it wouldn't be contained within that area.
I understand.
And then you have one that's 600.
Okay.
We have another dark slide, but I'll just read it off to you real quick. This is... There are approximately 349 parcels in the county that are zoned... I think I mentioned this before. Are zoned TPZ in the county. And then the total acreage is about 116,000. 26% of TPZ property has a site class between one and two, and that's data that have been collected from the assessor's office. And I actually have...
Just real quick, Supervisor Rockholm has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to confirm, there's no harvestable timber on that... On Bunch Creek, is there?
At this point, there is... They're not engaging in any timber harvest operations, no.
There's no timber. It's all burned, right?
A portion of the site has been burned, about 70%. 30% has been unburned, so there may be some harvestable timber on that remaining 30%.
Thank you.
So this map is timberland production parcels by site class. This data was obtained from the Placer County Assessor's Office. And what it shows is, again, the site classes range between one and five. Site class on the Bunch Creek property is between two and four. I also obtained a map here from... Consulted with the State Department of Agriculture, the Natural Resource Conservation Service. This is their map. This is another site class map. Also, soil type site class is largely based on soil type. This map is very consistent with our data, the county's data. It shows site classes ranging between two and four on the project site. However, there are some pockets of site class one, which is the most productive, just some small pockets right up... Right up kind of in here. So as directed by your board, the modified project was also presented to the Weimar Applegate Colfax Municipal Advisory Council on April 21st. They voted 3-2 in favor of the immediate... Or of the rezoning. Those in support noted that the proposal is consistent with the surrounding zoning and land use. And then those in opposition noted concerns regarding this project setting a precedent for the conversion of other TPZ lands. The project was then presented, actually, prior to that, to the Placer County Agricultural Commission on April 12th, and the commission voted unanimously 7-0 in opposition to the zone... To both rezoning options. They noted that the land is a critical resource and suitable for continued timber harvest production if it was managed properly. And then lastly, the project was presented to the Planning Commission per your direction, and that was on May 13th for further consideration. The commission unanimously adopted a motion to recommend the Board of Supervisors' denial of the rezoning and the 10... The immediate and the 10-year, and the modified parcel map, and that was a 5-0 vote. The commission concluded that the property was suitable for timber production and that both requests for rezoning were contrary to the purpose, the overall purpose of the timber production zone district. They determined that the proposed rezon is not consistent with the policies set forth in the Placer County General Plan as they relate to forest resources. They determined that the proposed rezoning of this property would result in the fragmentation of the existing TPZ zoning area, which would have an adverse impact to the area's timber production potential and current surrounding timber harvest operations, which they felt is also inconsistent with the goals and policies of the county's general plan as it relates to forest resources. Lastly, they also determined that because of the potential land use conflicts associated with residential uses and timberland management and production, adjoining parcels also zoned TPZ may encounter difficulties maintaining their timber harvest operations, and therefore it may result in further reduction or conversion of farmable timbers. With respect to the request for a modification to the approved parcel... Previously approved parcel map, the modification to that was for the purpose of creating a 100-foot agricultural setback along the property lines at about other TPZ areas and uses. That 100-foot agricultural setback was really for... Served as mitigation, reducing impacts, potential impacts related to potential land use conflicts, reducing those to less than significant. Therefore, because the Planning Commission recommended denial of the rezoning request, the proposed modification to the tentative parcel map was not necessary, and accordingly, the approval of the proposed modification to that map was not recommended by the commission. So with that, staff brings forward the Planning Commission's recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to deny the applicant's request for either the immediate or the 10-year rollout rezoning of the subject property from timberland production zone to residential forest with a combining 80-acre minimum lot size, and to deny the request for the modified tentative parcel map based on the findings contained in our staff report. I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Questions by board members? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, Crystal, could you... I'm sorry. Could you go back to the early zoning map there that showed what was TPZ surrounding it, what was residential zoning surrounding it?
This one here?
Yeah.
So you have TPZ up here, and it goes all along, goes a little further up.
Uh-huh.
TPZ here. So this would be... This is where it would bisect it. So it would actually... It would touch in the corner here. And then over here, you've got residential forest. Over here, you have farm. Down here, you have more farm. Farm. And then on this side, I can't see, but I think it's farm, and some, again, farm down here. So different lot sizes. This is 4.6. This is 5. And then up here, you have smaller... This is, I think, residential forest up in here with smaller lot sizes down to the, I believe, the acre or possibly two.
Okay. So the reason I ask is because one of the things under the request for immediate rezon, and I just want to make sure if I understand this correctly, is it says, "Conversion shall be considered only if there is no proximate and suitable land which is not zoned as timberland production for the alternate use not permitted within a timberland production zone." So if I understand what that says, it says, "You can think about this conversion, this immediate conversion, if there isn't already property surrounding it that you can put residences on."
Correct. Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that because it was a little bit of a convoluted sentence.
Right. That was a finding that the Planning Commission had made.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for now. Thank you.
Okay. Questions by other board members? So I heard you speak to your proposed recommendation of denial of the immediate conversion. I don't believe I heard you address your proposed recommendation for denial of the 10-year rollout. What is... Why is staff recommending denial of that?
We're bringing forward the Planning Commission's recommendation, and it was a recommendation for denial on both, the immediate and the rezoning. And I can go over that... Those reasons that were addressed at the Planning Commission hearing again, if you'd like me to.
Correct. Thank you. All right. Other questions by board members? All right. At this point, since the applicant and the appellant are one and the same, we will hear from their representative, who I believe is Mr. Remington.
Good afternoon. I'm Jack Remington, and I'm here representing the owners of the property. I'd like to start out in a simple form and say that we would like to withdraw the immediate out. We understand that in talking to a variety of people that that is a more or less a policy issue, and this may not be the best place to decide that as a policy issue. It was chosen to do that because there is no marketable timber on the site. The question was asked, what is there? The unburned 30 acres is approximately all oak trees. It is not part of the conifer area. There may be a few in there. I don't want a neighbor to say there's... Yeah, that there are some. With the withdrawal, then I'd like to proceed on with the 10-year out. And I would like, before I say what I have to say on this, comment a couple of things on what was just said. I'd like to go to the next slide after this one. I think it represents the zoning better than this one does. Right. I know it's hard to see, but you find to the east is forestry, forestry, residential forestry, and residential forestry. So you have the same zoning that we're asking for to the north of the lower chunk of our property. The TPZ zone, we know that is the neighbor. The two small TPZ zones or parcels are to the east with the residential forestry abutting it. The property to the south is the Bureau of Reclamation that was purchased having to do with Auburn Dam, its water zone. And then as you go to the east, it's all farm, all the way from, I believe, 2.3 to 5 acres with a couple of 20-acre parcels in there. Comment was made about the forestry being talked to, and I understand what they said, and I would agree with them, but they are talking about timber production companies in the business to grow timber and sell it. That is not what this is. The original property was about 1,100 acres. It included the property outlined in dark and all the property to the north, which is shown as TPZ. I tried to find out when that went into the Williamson Act, and the county's records were pretty hard to find, and I didn't find it. But I do know that the state enacted the original zoning... Have to get my glasses so I can see properly. The Forest Taxation Reform Act was established by the state in 1976, and this property was in the Williamson Act long before that. I don't know how long. I do know that I believe Edward started farming and raising timber or managing timber in the 40s, but I'm not sure. So it could be some time before that. Also, we now have three different soil maps. I have a soil map I got from the Soil Conservation Service that showed this as low-quality land. Mr. Edwards has given me his own personal report, which shows that as high-quality land. And now I understand that the exhibit that was shown is from somebody else, which shows it being in-between and maybe better quality. If you were to visit the site, I think you would find that a lot of this is very steep ground. If you go back to the aerial photograph, you can see the steep areas and the drainage areas. One of the questions that was asked of us is, you know, what is the benefit of doing this to the county or to other people? The county has gone on a vast program of trying to promote local farms, local produce, local cattle raising, and so on. And the feeling is that an 80-acre parcel that was not limited to just timber production is something that some people would want. I don't want 80 acres, but some people would want. They would like to live on it, and they would like to manage it, and we think this is a very good example. Also, I understand that the Cal FIRE is working on or has worked on a plan for a fire break along Gillis Ridge, which borders part of this property, and it's all to the west of the North Fork of the American River. The road that we would be putting in for the parcel map would provide excellent access to that ridge for any type of fire equipment. Right now, it's a dirt road that was put in, basically at the last fire. With that, you know, what else... What else can we do with the site? If we were not in TPZ zoning right now and we wanted to go into TPZ zoning, we could not meet the requirements to go into TPZ. It requires you to have a Class V or higher soil. We do have V. We do have a little bit of higher quality, but most of it is not under the conservation map that I received. And then in addition to that, it's a... I don't know. It's just... It's something that... It's burned. It's brushed. It's a fire hazard, and we're trying to do something with it, and request that you consider giving us a 10-year out and a rezon. Thank you.
Okay. And just to clarify, with the concurrence of your clients, that you are dropping the request for the immediate rezon and asking the board to consider the 10-year rollout from TPZ, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm seeing the property owners nodding because that doesn't show up well on the tape. All right. Thank you very much. Any members of the board have any questions of the applicant at this point? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item?
Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn Jasper, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club. We are urging you to uphold the Planning Commission's denial of this TPZ rezon, and we'd like to highlight three points. First, as we've indicated in our comments, our sequa letters, this project is inappropriate as a mitigated negative declaration... With a mitigated neg deck. A United States Forest Service report titled, "Private Forests: Public Benefits," states in part, "Putting houses in forests breaks up wildlife habitat, creates erosion, pollutes water sources, makes fighting wildfires more difficult, and compounds the threats from insects and air pollution. This proposal requires a full environmental impact report." Second, TPZs are unique. In exchange for growing and harvesting timber, TPC properties receive generous tax breaks, and those are intended to encourage continuous prudent and responsible forest practices. Also, they provide revenue for the county. In this situation, the documents indicate that after the destructive fire, the owners at that time were given the opportunity to replant, to reforest, but they chose not to. Big difference here. To allow a destructive fire to be manipulated into opportunistic rezoning sets very dangerous precedent. In addition, evidence has been presented indicating the parcel could eventually regain its economically viable timber production operations. And then last, just as important, a rezon to residential uses would create public safety risks. Placer County's own mitigated... I'm sorry. Multi-hazard mitigation plan confirms that wildfire risk is predominantly associated with, quote, "wildland urban interface," unquote, areas. Development that is interspersed with landscapes that support wildland fires places citizens in harm's way. If the land is historically so fire-prone, then that's all the more reason for the county to not allow residential forest rezoning. We urge you to support the Planning Commission's decision, deny this rezon request. And for the record, I'd like to submit a newspaper article, quote, "Housing Poses Threat to Private Forests." Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please step up.
Good morning. I'm Alan Edwards. My family and I live and farm on 520 acres that's just north and east of this, or north and west of this project. Over the many, many events that have happened, the hearings and such, on this project, the applicants have offered many arguments why the project should go forward. They say, they have said that this would reduce the wildfire risk by putting people on it, but Cal Fire, the unit chief Brad Harris has written you a letter that's in your file saying just the opposite. They say the land shouldn't be in TPZ because the soils are bad. The applicant talked about the soils a little bit. The detailed soils analysis that he mentioned was done by USDA. It's not my analysis, it's US Department of Agriculture NRCS analysis. And it shows that with some exceptions of rocky outcroppings, the soils, the timber sites are medium to high. They say the rezoning would make the land more compatible with surrounding land, and yet if you look at the land around the boundary, 64% of it is either TPZ or federal properties. 22% is two large parcels, and only 14% is small parcels, and that's parcels to the west. They say that they should have the right to subdivide their land and put it into housing as a matter of property rights. But to do that, the county would need to give them property rights they didn't buy when they bought the land. And doing that would cause conflicts that would put my longstanding timber operation at risk. It would basically diminish my property rights. They say smaller parcel sizes will make it more likely for new owners to restore and manage the forest. But the economics are very clear. When you reduce the parcel size, and particularly when you add housing as a matter of right, the price of the land raises, and that fundamentally changes the economics of timber management, of farming on this land. And it would chase off buyers who really want to buy the land to replant. Overall, their arguments, in my opinion, just don't hold water. The TPZ zone districts, they've served as a model for conservation, protected land in this county for 34 years. In part, they've done this by keeping the price of forest land in line with the forest land value, the forest value of that land. A testament to how well this has worked is the fact that the applicants were able to buy this land at its, at the peak of the real estate boom, at its underlying value, as TPZ land, which was $500 an acre. Now they want you to simply give them more rights. Approving their proposal, either, well, they've withdrawn the immediate, so approving the 10-year rollout would contradict the general plan, it would contradict the thoughtful recommendations from the Ag Commission, the Planning Commission, and your staff. I just have about 30 seconds left. It would fundamentally change the economics of TPZ land, and in my opinions, it would undermine the basis of the county's TPZ conservation protection. So I strongly urge that you deny this request for rezoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I have some history since I've been involved with this land for 63 years now, so if you have any questions.
Supervisors, during the fire, was any of your property burned?
During the Ponderosa fire, we lost about 110 acres. And I have replanted most of that, replanted it mostly to Ponderosa pine with good survival, and some of those trees now are as much as 20 feet tall, six inches in diameter.
And you maintain the property as far as fire hazard?
We have. The Ponderosa fire, they actually stopped the Ponderosa fire using, CDF did, using a fuel, a shaded fuel break that we had installed on the top of the ridge. And we've maintained that fuel break, and we've since installed two other lateral fuel breaks. And we're basically installing a network of fuel breaks, in part to protect our land and in part to protect the community that's downwind from us, conceding coal facts.
And when you reforested, did you get federal or state help to do that?
We did. We got help through what's called the Equip Program, which provides, for us, since we were longstanding cooperators, we got a 50% cost share for a new cooperator, which these landowners would be, my understanding, if they applied, they would get a 75% cost share. So 75% of the cost of replanting, which is considerable, would be paid for by that program. And that program, as of a few months ago, was funded. It's refunded every year.
And so the neighboring property under question, which had former owners, they had the opportunity to apply to that program as well?
The owners before the current owners, yeah. My understanding is they actually applied for it, although I can't attest to that, but I've been told they applied for it and did not exercise that option. But that program is open to the current owners. And it covers not only just the cost of planting the trees, it covers the cost of controlling the brush, which is now the much more significant cost. And it would pay, I believe, up to, for the total project, up to somewhere between $1,500 and $2,000 an acre, that it would actually pay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
None for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to address the board? Please, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Bob Suter. I'm a registered professional forester. I've been practicing forestry in Placer County since 1964. I manage small 10-acre woodlots, and more recently, I managed, was a West Coast manager for Lone Star Timber, managing their 40,000 acres in Placer County. TPZ has been one of the most important factors in preserving the forest industry on private lands in Placer County. And I would urge you to deny this rollout on that basis alone, and look at what's good for Placer County, not what's just good for one landowner who essentially mined the property of all its natural resources and now wants to be rewarded for that by getting out of TPZ. And Supervisor Rockholm, I think you mentioned, is there any merchantable timber on the property now? That's beside the point, because there are so many other factors that enter into TPZ zoning, water quality, wildlife habitat. And I would just urge you not to fragment this zoning, but to keep it and not set a precedent by taking it out piece by piece. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else want to address the board? How many, may I see, show of hands, how many folks want to address the board on this item? Okay, come on up. Don't be shy, let's just step up.
Michael Murphy, 5617, Adobe Road in Rockland. I was recently offered an opportunity to invest in a private corporation that's goal is basically to buy land zone one way, and then through funding city council and county supervisor campaigns, getting the land rezoned another way. And that's been going on in Placer County, and Rockland, and Roseville, and Lincoln forever. And I just want to bring that to your attention before you decide one way or the other on this, because I'm not sure that even applies in this particular instance, but that the public keeps in mind that this is what goes on. And then they get it rezoned another way where they make a ton of money off of the property. And that's something that I was kind of shocked and awe that I would actually be invited to participate in. I'm the biggest anti-communist in the world, but I'm certainly not the friend of anybody trying to buy my government to have property rezoned for a profit, so they go in under the assumption they're going to be able to get this rezoned. I don't know if this is the case here, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention so you give it some thought before you go through with the approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Board, my name is Jim Ricker. I'm from Dutch Flat. I'm the president of the North Fork American River Alliance, and I urge you to support Planning Commission's recommendation of denying this rezone. Essentially, what they're trying to do is create 80-acre estates. I don't believe that forestry will be any part of what they're doing. It's called residential forestry, which puts residential as the primary goal of the zoning. Mr. Remington said that growing timber and selling it is not what this is about. This is exactly what it's about, is about maintaining the viability of agriculture, a timber economy. And just because there's some parcels that were misguidedly carved up, small to the east or to the west, does not mean this should be. In fact, it makes this more incumbent that this stays as a pod of forest land, so that Placer County can maintain variations in their economy. I'd like to add what Mr. Suter said to that. The land was logged, harvested, timber was harvested sometime between 1994 and 1996, and it was never replanted. All value was stripped from that land, and nothing was reinvested. And if you're going to be in the timber business, you have to reinvest in your land. And because the previous owners did not choose to do that, now the current owners are speculating that they will be able to come in, buy it at a low price, get it rezoned, and build view lots, which is the only thing left. Of course, those view lots will be on the ridges, will be in fire, incredible fire danger. And I don't want my taxes, or the other taxes of the residents of the state of California to go up, because we continue to approve development in the wildland urban interface. And so I urge you again to deny this appeal. And I think I'll just let the rest of them talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name's Clifford Raymus Jr. I lived in Placer County and Nevada County. My parents and grandparents come from Placer County, Jim. The reason I'm here is I've recreated in the North Fork American for over 55 years. And to see the river and the water quality and everything go as houses, we're going to have growth coming up from the valley eventually. But to keep to the general plan, that's why we have it. To break the general plan just because someone goes ahead and does bad business practices and then puts the onus on the other owners through economic pressures till they have to break it up isn't fair to anybody, even the public. Then to have, well, I just wanted to state that one point. The other issue that comes to my mind is when, as a business owner, I look at something, and I've had a business, and you come in maybe undercapitalized, and you get into trouble, and then you have to either sell or look to other areas. And I think that's what's happening here. And I just hate to see that the people that have been paying taxes, the honest people that have been putting in their monies on investments and long range are going to be short-changed because someone all of a sudden does a quick fix. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How many more folks? Okay, this gentleman, and then the gentleman just addresses him.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Woodall. I'm an attorney here in Auburn. I've got an office in Auburn for about 20 years now. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of Protect American River Canyons, which for, gosh, nearly four decades now, has worked to conserve the natural, the recreational, and the scenic resources of the American River Canyons. I'm urging you today to follow your planning staff's recommendation and deny this 10-year rollout request. I'd like to remind the board that that recommendation follows on the heels of votes by both the Ag Commission and the Planning Commission to deny this application in its entirety, including the 10-year rollout. And I would just remind you that both those votes, both the Ag vote and the Planning Commission vote, were unanimous votes to deny this 10-year rollout request. There's compelling reasons for why those recommendations were made and why you should adopt those recommendations at this meeting today. I'd like to, again, remind you that the land in question, these 600 acres in question lie deep within the rugged, remote, and spectacular North Fork American River Canyon. Much of the land lies very, very close to the North Fork American River itself, including a ridge that sits prominently above the river. These lands have historically been managed as timberlands. And I think a key finding of your Planning Commission is that the land remains viable for continued timber operations. The mere fact that the land, much of it burned over in 2001 in the Ponderosa fire, does not mean that the land is no longer economically viable for timber production. Timber burns from time to time. It's a renewable resource. It takes time to grow. It's a long-term investment. But this is not land that has lost its ability to produce timber. The soil remains productive timber-producing soil, and I think that's important to remember. As others have said, I think carving the land into seven parcels and putting homes on each is going to do nothing except basically end timber operations on this land and harm timber operations on surrounding lands. And to do so would be inconsistent with the general plan. I want to address the fire hazard issue, because that really wasn't addressed in detail in staff's report. Now, the applicants argue that since the Ponderosa fire in 2001, brush has accumulated, and the land has become a fire hazard. Well, that's true. But the question is, does that justify this rezone request? It doesn't. It's important to remember, the applicant purchased this land in 2004 at a price that reflected both its TPZ zoning designation and the previous owner's failure to reforest the land. And in the six years since they purchased the land, the applicants have done nothing to reduce the fuel loads or to reforest the land. Instead, they've just simply allowed the brush to grow. Now they seek to justify this rezone request, which will allow their property's value to skyrocket by claiming that scattering seven homes across the 600 fire-prone acres like this will somehow reduce the fire risk. That's nonsense. I just urge you to remember Cal Fire's recommendation, Chief Harris's March 8 letter, that says this is a bad idea to put homes on this fire-prone land. And lastly, I just want to briefly mention that the mitigated negative deck, in my view, is clearly legally deficient. It fails to appropriately mitigate for many impacts, including the possible viewshed impacts from putting homes on these ridges so close to the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, just to clarify, this is the last person that wants to speak? Okay, go ahead.
Michael Garbedian, Friends of the North Fork, is delighted to be here to support the denial recommendation to you from the various county bodies that have looked forward to this. We're very grateful about the work the staff has done and that the commission has done. The recent Forest on the Edge report of the Pacific Northwest Forest and Range Experiment Station, that's their document GTR 795, recently came out, is dated last December. It makes it clear that the American River watershed, the private forest lands in the American River watershed are among the most threatened by housing and fire in the west and also in the context of the country. It's an excellent report. The county's vegetation hazard ordinance that applies to certain areas of the county but not other areas, that is really the policy that should be applicable here. Obviously, the county does not want to create a situation where someone allows a fire hazard to grow on their property and then comes in for a rezoning. Rezoning is not the method to do vegetation management. A note on the Williamson Act. The Williamson Act was, of course, in existence before the TPZ law came along. The legislature well knew that. To get out of the Williamson Act, it's automatic 10-year non-renewal and you're out. However, here, there are the checks and balances. The county must approve the rezone, and then the conversion must be approved by the State Board of Forestry. And our view is also that the rollout is also a conversion that requires State Board of Forestry approval. Some of my other points have been made. Basically, we think you have a litmus test here, a choice between going with the natural resource that renews on its own with a minimum, very minimum of management, and stays in forest use and provides jobs, provides income for landowners using that zoning. That versus an investment in new housing that does have an approved three-lot subdivision, three-lot minor division, but it's not, it hasn't gone forward, because as I understand it, to get the final map on the three lots would require 3/4 of a million dollar investment in roads to go up to those houses, one on the Gillis Ridge and the other on two prominent points, pretty deep into the property. So you're being asked to do an act that would help them get more buyers and raise more investment to convert forest land to housing. We really think you have a clear choice here, and trust that you will very carefully recommend this and follow the recommendation to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Since there's nobody else at this point, we'll let the applicant come back up and summarize their concluding remarks.
Thank you. I wrote a number of them down, and I tried this time not to get into all the discussions we had before about who did what and when and where. But I guess a couple of them I have to say. First off, the current owners did not mine the site. The site was mined by the owners before that, who just happened to have been Mr. Edwards Partners at one point. The Plan Commission action, the first time it came, it was a four-to-one vote. There were two absentees, so it was not a unanimous of all seven board members, commission members. The second time, it was a 5-0 vote against us, and I understand that. But there were also two people missing at that one, so it was not a unanimous of the commission. The general plan is 80 acres. They're telling us we're changing the general plan. We're not. We're changing the zoning because TPZ does not allow anything under 160 acres. Even though the map you had on the board has a lot of properties that are less than 160 acres, I understand they are that way because there were multiple ownerships, one ownership of multiple parcels. Tim's comment about the property impacting the North Fork of the American River, it does not impact the border of the river along this area. There's one little corner that is on the ridge. The river is not. There is no doubt that this watershed goes into the American River, as well as Bost Hill, a whole lot of other places do. Gillis Hill Ridge, we did a specific action in the negative declaration to show what was visible and what is not visible out of the seven sites that are potential on the property. And you cannot see those houses from anywhere on the river, because that was an issue, and we agreed with it, and we worked on doing that. With that, I ask you to consider our request. This has been a long, difficult fight. We started this because all we wanted was the caretaker's residence, and we were told we could not have caretaker's residence because there was no timber to manage, and so this is where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going back to the board for comments or questions by board members. Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. And Crystal, I wanted to really thank you and staff for taking very seriously the direction we gave you in March to go back and look at some of these other options and alternatives. And I think largely what's in our package is what we saw in March, but you did come back with some new information on the topics we asked you to look at. And I think it's pretty clear from the information, both from the California Department of Forestry and from the private foresters you spoke to, that reduction in size is not a good thing for timber production, generally speaking. I wanted to address the issue of missing board members because, you know, we can make the argument that there were only five people at the Planning Commission when they heard it. I can make the reverse argument that there were only five people at the WAC Mac when they heard it, and the new member who's come on since then has informed me that she would have voted against the rezon, so we would have had a 3-3 vote. We can make those arguments forever. The votes are what they are. My feeling on this is, when you buy timber production zone, you're buying a known quantity. You're buying specific property rights that go with that. And you either buy it to grow timber and manage timber as a long-term commitment, or, as Mr. Murphy has indicated, you buy it because you're speculating you can get your zoning changed on it. I am going to vote to uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation and deny this appeal and deny the request for a modified tentative parcel map because I think as a county policy, we have a real commitment to TPZ. We need to reinforce that, and we need to stand by that commitment.
Supervisor, Wygant, you have a question?
Staff, probably, but anybody could welcome an answer. Clearly, your recommendations are related to the economics and the changes of the TPZ in the block. Thank you for that research. But it clearly indicated that larger parcel sizes for timber harvest were better in the view of the folks from which you got the research. In some of our contemporary agriculture, you're seeing some in the foothills and on the bale floor, some smaller parcels becoming more viable. So I'm assuming that you came across none of that, and do you have any other comments about parcel size and timber harvest specifically as an agricultural pursuit?
A lot of the smaller operations that we have encountered have to do with Christmas tree farms and things of that nature, smaller lot sizes that are harvesting timber for that purpose. I'm not, and perhaps Lauren can chime in here, I'm not as familiar with major harvest operations on smaller parcels. So no, I don't know. I do know a lot of folks that are doing the Christmas tree operations on TPZ land.
It seems where there's the greatest amount of discretion as to the issue of size versus economic viability is related to site class. So the higher that site class, the greater flexibility you have in terms of bringing property that, say, is out of production back into production. If you have a site class one, then you have that greatest potential. If you have a site class, the other end of the spectrum is low, is five or six, obviously your opportunities have diminished. And the same we would see with the Williamson Act. But beyond that, we really didn't come to any other conclusion, or there was no additional information that would lead us to any conclusion, other than what we found in the Cal Fire correspondence, which is, in general, the larger the parcel, the greater the economic viability.
Okay, Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those of us that have the authority to approve and change zoning laws, make land use decisions, have to carefully consider the effects of their decisions on the public at large. Development has been allowed in floodplains, areas prone to landslides, and in forested areas. All of this development causes millions of dollars of public monies to be spent repairing the damage caused by natural occurrences, as well as human interface with wildlands. Fire is what happens in the West. Much of it occurs naturally. Sadly, many times, they are caused by human activity. The terrible Ankor Fire was caused by an unattended campfire. The Washoe Fire was caused by a propane tank on a back porch. And the most recent 49 Fire happened because of arsonists. Regardless of the cause, resources are diverted from stopping the fire to protecting structures that have been allowed by decision-makers such as us. This has to stop somewhere. And I think it goes to Brad Harris's letter. Cities and counties of California are urged to carefully consider the placement of any developments and individual structures and wildlands designated as having a high fire hazard. There'll be another fire there. And by putting structures there is not going to help the public. And so I'm going to vote to uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
Supervisor Rockland?
I'm probably the only one swimming in this direction, in this water. But I'm just going to, my comments are going to be basically, if somebody owns a piece of property, they have a right within certain bounds and legal authority to develop that property and use it. In this case, you've got a large piece of property that's been completely burned off of all of the resources that were there and has not been reforested. Mr. Murphy made the comment that, I just want to assure, that Mr. Parker and his partner did not donate to my campaign, so they didn't buy my vote, because Mr. Murphy is always that way anyway. But I look at it from the standpoint that, over time, I just believe that these property owners should have the right to develop their property. And the only person that I've heard speak here today that actually has a legitimate, I guess, buy-in or reason to complain would be Mr. Edwards, who is the closest neighbor who is still harvesting his timber. But so for that point, I would vote to allow that, but I'm probably going to be the only one.
Just a couple of questions, if I may, of staff. The map up there isn't very clear, and it's not a lot clearer in our packet, unfortunately, as it relates to the parcel under consideration. It looks like that is the sum total for individual parcels. Is that correct?
Those are parcel numbers. Those are assessor parcel numbers that are specific for tax purposes, but not necessarily legally created separately saleable lots. So no, those are just numbers.
Okay. So it's Planning Staff contention that, right now, those could not be sold as for separate lots?
Correct. Yeah. Right now, it's legally one lot. However, they have a tentative parcel map that created, under the TPZ, they came in a few years back and got approval for a tentative parcel map, which created three lots that were consistent with the TPZ lot size. That is a tentative map. It has not been finalized. They have some extensions on that, so they haven't finalized it yet. But currently, it's just one legally created separately saleable lot.
Okay. And then, again, unfortunately, I'm not able to see with great clarity what we're looking at here. But as we kind of work the perimeter, we are seeing, and I'm looking at the zonings, I'm guessing residential forest, let's start out at the east, residential forestry, or just forestry, I don't know what FB is, farm, FB farm, something?
I'm going to change the slide real quick.
Okay.
That was the rezoning slide submitted by the applicant. So we had created this one, which is a zoning slide. So right here is, down here is farm, so FBX, 20-acre minimum. And then right down in here, I think, is W, which is water influence.
Which is, I'm sorry?
Water influence, where there's the water, the river.
Okay. So, but the ownership is federal, is that, or?
I believe this one is federal. Uh-huh. And then over here is farm, again. And up here is residential forest.
And then the underlying zoning is 20 units, or 20 acres, the unit?
80 here.
80 on that one?
Uh-huh. And then over here, we've got, it's really hard for me to see, I apologize, but we've got farm with 4.6. And I believe this one is even smaller than that, like farm with, I want to say 2.3, perhaps?
Okay.
And then farm with 20 here. And then over here is 4.6. And over here is 5, residentially, and those are residential uses.
Okay. And off to the east, again, you have two different parcels that are both 20? No, to the east, directly to the east of the southern portion that juts up.
Up here.
Nope. Keep going. Further east, right there.
Okay. Farm, I'm sorry, 20-acre minimum.
20-acre minimum.
Uh-huh. And then, again, just the two TPZ, the other, there are only two other TPZ property owners, right here and right here.
Right. Right. Okay. And I guess that, I mean, that kind of goes to one of just several general observations. You made the statement when you showed the map, and maybe we can bring it back up, that shows all the different TPZ zones.
These are all the, this one here?
That was the one, yeah.
Yeah, this is by acreage of zone and acreage of parcel.
And you made the comment that if this were approved, the residential zoning would fragment the TPZ. As I look at how far removed that is from the areas of active forestry in the county, it looks like the TPZ has fragmented the residential there. I mean, clearly you have residential uses predominantly in the area, as opposed to forestry uses predominantly in the area.
The statement was that if this were approved, it would fragment the existing TPZ area for which the Bunch Creek property is a part of. So we have many different TPZ areas throughout the county, but it would just fragment that one existing area.
Okay, fair enough. Question was raised in regard to the easement, and the gentleman who does actively farm the trees on the property evidently has an easement through this property. Has there ever been any question of the easement as it relates to his access to continue his activities?
That would probably be, I mean, we don't get involved in those types of civil issues related to the easement across the property, and that might be a question for him.
But there was an assertion by staff that part of your concern was that the rezon of this to the residential 80-acre would somehow impact his farm operations.
Well, typically, what we do is, when we are reviewing a rezoning, one of the big issues is land use compatibility. Is the new designation rezoning district, is that consistent or compatible with the surrounding land uses? And so we have to, when we're analyzing, look at the existing land uses around it and determine whether or not there's a compatibility issue. And in this case, we have an active timber harvest operation to the north of the site, and they do take access across this property. So, in theory, you know, there are logging trucks going back and forth. And typically, there could be potential land use conflicts with, you know, logging activities, logging trucks, and more residential uses on that same roadway. So additional residences.
Would those kinds of activities not be covered under our right to farm? I mean, you have an inherent right to farm your property, and activities associated with that are covered. And so you, as the neighboring landowner, kind of tough. I mean, that's the way that we've historically treated it. You've got to deal with it.
The county's right to farm ordinance is largely a disclosure ordinance, so it doesn't provide a particular mechanism or a method. But it is intended to ensure that people who are adjacent to or surrounding farming areas are aware that those farming activities could be incompatible with residential.
Okay. Yeah, I think perhaps my only other observation is, well, two other observations. When we talk about Placid County being a right to farm, and the TPZ as an extension of Williamson, providing people an incentive to keep their land in productive agriculture, in this instance, timber as opposed to rice or something else, I'm concerned about this notion that somehow our intent to preserve farming through our right to farm ordinance has somehow become a requirement to farm ordinance, and that we say we're now taking the position that if you buy something with an Ag designation on it, you must. You know, in other words, if it previously grew rice and you buy it, then you must continue to grow rice. And I don't know that that's ever been our intent as a county or as a board to require that activity, but simply to allow where that activity is desired by the new property owner to continue. And then I will say, it is not at all lost on me the irony of organizations that, for years, fought timber harvesting in the West, for years, fought against these activities on an environmental basis, resulting in the dismantling of the infrastructure that was necessary to keep our timber harvest viable, suddenly showing up and insisting that we preserve opportunities to harvest timber. I just think it's disingenuous that, on the one hand, some of these organizations would say, for years, that timber harvesting is so environmentally damaging, and then show up and say, we must preserve that activity on this piece. So that's, sir, I didn't mention you by name. I didn't mention anybody by name. Thank you very much.
I'm from Forestry and Conservation.
Okay, thank you. Simply an irony that wasn't lost on me, that's all. Again, not mentioning anybody by name or an organization by name. So if there are no other questions or comments?
Do the council have something they wanted to?
Okay. No other questions or comments by board members? We need a motion, one way or another, on this item. Supervisor Montgomery?
I would move that we support the Planning Commission's recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to deny the applicant's request for a 10-year rollout rezoning of the subject property from timberland production zone to residential forest with a combining 80-acre lot size, and we deny the request for a modified tentative parcel map based on the findings below. Tony, I'm assuming we don't have to make a motion on the first one since they've withdrawn it?
No, but I think your motion should include the reference that they actually formally withdrew it at the hearing.
Okay, with a notice that the applicant formally withdrew their request for an immediate rezoning of the subject property from TPZ to residential forest, combining an 80-acre lot size.
And the motion would include the schematic of the findings made on page 10?
Yes.
In the denial, for both the 10-year rollout and the parcel map modification.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We will have a roll call on the motion, please.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockholm?
No.
Wygant?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Eulert?
No. All right, thank you very much. We will move on with our department head items, and that would be...
Thank you. Yes, 6B. Thank you, Mr. Remington. We'll give it just a quick moment. All right. Now that folks have mostly had a chance to filter out, we'll go ahead and pick up department head item 6B. This is a request... This is a request by Supervisor Montgomery to establish the Donner Summit Area Municipal Advisory Council. Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you, yes. A number of individuals from the Plaster County portion of the Donner Summit area came to me with a request to actually reinstitute a MAC that used to be up there a number of years ago, many years ago. Um, and their request was actually just to establish a MAC that runs from about Cisco Grove, a little bit west of Cisco Grove, to Donner Summit, um, the actual physical summit itself. Um, excuse me. Their request was based on a desire to have a more formal relationship with the county, and they felt that a MAC would give them the opportunity to do that. It's their indication to me that they only want to meet quarterly at this point, because there's not a whole heck of a lot going on Donner Summit, but they want to make sure that they have a, an organ to communicate their needs and desires, um, when, when things do occur up there. I don't have any problem with it, um, there are some costs associated with it. Um, I believe, from discussions that I've had with some community groups, we actually have, um, a free meeting place, so we won't have any costs for a meeting. I will need to talk to the county about, um, what the implications are of having a secretary volunteer his or her time to take notes. I don't know if we can actually do that, or if we are required to pay someone to do that, but, um, people are very keen to have this happen, and, um, as it is quite literally in my backyard, I have no objection to a seventh MAC. Um, you know, it just is one more thing for me to do, uh, one night of the week, in this case, on a quarterly basis. So, I would, um, you know, I would ask this board to support my request to adopt a resolution adopting the, it's, it's actually called the Donner Summit Municipal Advisory Council. I don't think we put area in it, because it's supposed to be DismAC as compared to DatMAC, so.
Okay. Um, thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that the area was taken out, because I didn't want it to be the DSA MAC.
No, 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 it's DismAC.
And I'd prefer the Don Summ.
Or the Donna Summer, Summer.
Yeah.
Supervisor Rockholm?
I just had a question. What are the potential costs for this, with staff time, additional staff time, and have to drive clear up there for an extra meeting?
Thank you, Supervisor Rockholm. Mike Boyle with the Executive Office. We did an analysis of all the MACs in the county, as your board knows. You have 13 MACs that provide advisory services to this board, and, uh, the cost in MACs that run monthly is anywhere from 400 plus to about $600. And, uh, since this MAC might run a little less than that, if it is quarterly, it would be less than that, Supervisor Rockholm. Um, a rough estimate might be 250, 300, but that would not include the travel time for staff to get up there. This would just be the administrative costs. So, we do, would not have an answer to that until we knew what issues they would be bringing up, how many SEDR staff, or fire staff, or whatever. So, those would be on top of those admin costs.
Copy. Uh, any other questions or comments by board members? Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item, on the creation of the Donna Summer MAC? All right, do we have a motion?
I move we adopt a resolution establishing the Donner Summit Municipal Advisory Council.
All right, motion, Montgomery, second by Supervisor Holmes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay, let the record reflect, Supervisor Rockholm voted in opposition. Absolutely, roll call, which let the record reflect. Thank you very much. We will move on to, uh, supervi, uh, excuse me, uh, let's take item number eight, District Attorney's Office. Mr. Owens has had the opportunity to learn far more about excavation of burial sites and TPZ zoning than I'm sure he ever wanted or needed, and so-
It was quite interesting, though, I have to say.
We will take District Attorney-elect Owens.
I'm sure he was interested.
Yes, that's, that's why he went to law school and has been prosecuting people all these years. Go ahead.
Scott Owens, Assistant District Attorney, uh, 10810.
And District Attorney-elect.
And District Attorney-elect.
Yes.
Justice Center, Drive Suite 240. Uh, we're, we're, um, asking for your approval, uh, for us to enter into agreement with the Department of Justice on a, a number of items. As this board knows, uh, integral part of what we do involves forensic alcohol testing, uh, blood toxicology for drugs, also solid dose analysis for, for, for drug detection. Um, we have, over the course of the last 23 years contracted, approximately 23 years, uh, contracted with Valley Toxicology for those services, a private organization. Uh, with the downturn in the economy in 2008, with, with our costs approaching, quickly approaching $600,000, we made, uh, we, we actively worked to reduce those costs. In fiscal year '09, '10, we reduced those costs to $400,000, working with Valley Toxicology. Economic forces being what they are, we, uh, we, we're moving in a different direction from Valley Toxicology. They cannot continue at that rate. Uh, we, at the same time, uh, need to continue to try and reduce our costs. Uh, we went to invitation for bid, procurement issued an invitation for bid in July. Unfortunately, there were no viable bidders on that contract. At the same time, we were, uh, pursuant to the county procurement manual, uh, speaking with various, uh, governmental organizations about whether or not they could provide those services at a reduced cost for us. Uh, we spoke with Sacramento County over the last, of course, the last year and a half. We've spoken with, uh, Solano County, and, uh, recently with the Department of Justice. In July, uh, we met with Bureau Chief Jill Spriggs from the Department of Justice. She brought a team of folks up to our office. Uh, we were able to, uh, bring in folks from various levels within our own office. Uh, our line deputies were able to, uh, to, to, to ask some very hard questions about whether or not DOJ could provide the service that we needed, and we were able to basically exchange, if you will, expectations, uh, should we enter into an agreement with them. It was a very productive meeting. We left it, quite frankly, feeling very positive. Uh, and in short, they are going to provide forensic alcohol testing, uh, blood, uh, toxicology, and solid dose analysis for $250,000 in the upcoming year, which we're, we're quite pleased with. Uh, that leaves two other aspects that still remain to be dealt with. Uh, first off, uh, phlebotomy, who's going to get called in the middle of the night, come out and provide those services, and pull that blood out of there? And also, there's 246 preliminary alcohol screening devices that are utilized by our law enforcement officers out on the streets, and those machines need to be kept up and, and calibrated. Uh, Valley Toxicology will remain, uh, continues to service us in those two particular areas, at least for the course of the next year. Um, we're, we're quite excited about moving on. There is the process of, of transitioning from Valley Toxicology to the Department of Justice. How we currently envision this occurring, uh, and, and with your approval, is Valley Toxicology will, will, will pay them on a per-item, uh, basis until September 30th, at which point, uh, they would, we would continue to pay them for anything remaining between now and then, and anything that has backlog over the course of the last few months. They would continue to provide, uh, testimony regarding all items that they have ever tested, uh, it would be free of charge for us, or included in the cost, the per-item cost that we're, we're paying them. Uh, beginning on October 1st, and, and the reason why today's, uh, you, you making a decision today on this, is we have to, between now and October 1st, get all of our police officers, uh, within, peace officers within the county up to speed with, um, new mechanism of doing things. And, uh, we've got DOJ queued up, they're going to come in, they're going to provide the training, uh, for us free of charge. Uh, one of the things that came up during the course of our looking at this is we're one of the last counties in the state to be utilizing, uh, the intoxicilizer, and that, it gives me an opportunity to throw out there that, uh, the last year the DMV did the statistics, uh, Plaster County finished first in the state with regards to our conviction rate per arrest on, on DUIs. Uh, they don't do that stat the last couple of years, and I, but, the last year that they did it, we were number one, uh, even with the old intoxicilizer machines, which we have five of them within the county. The, with the Department of Justice, we would be moving to the Drager machines, the Drager 7410s and 7510s, and they are going to be providing us as part of this contract with 20 of those machines. And, uh, this board has previously approved our expenditure of some, uh, asset forfeiture money that will allow us to, to purchase 12 additional machines. So, we're going from five breath testing devices in a county to literally 32, uh, that'll be spread out through the various station houses, us out on the streets, uh, within the jails of this county, so we're quite excited about that as well. Um, it's a, it's a big mo, big move on our part. You might say it's a hot day, and we're at the end of the high dive, but we know it's going to be better once we jump in. But, but, you know, after, after a longstanding relationship with Valley Toxicology, who has really serviced this county, uh, in a top-notch fashion for 23 years, and will continue to do so, uh, as to a couple of different areas, but we will be moving with, uh, looking forward to moving with the Department of Justice.
Great. Any board members have any questions, uh, Mr. Owens? Seeing none, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? All right, we'll bring back the board for action. Motion by Rockholm, second by Wygant, to approve the request of District Attorney's Office. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Thank you very much.
If I might, Scott, those were not Draglin machines, were they?
Mr. Draglin spearheaded that unit that managed to get those, uh, those high marks.
All right, um, we, uh, we'll take up item seven, both A and B, they're associated items, however, um, I'm gonna just first check and see if there's any, would there be any problem with us delaying this item one meeting? And the reason I ask is, as we get to item B, which is associated with item A, I mean, we can take the action on item A, I have not had a chance to go through each of the modifications to those ordinances and the associated impact on the policies as it relates to the vehicles, volunteers, Williamson Act, the way that I would like to. I just, just since I got my packet on Friday, I haven't, just haven't had a chance to do it.
If I might, Mr. Chair, there's no issue in the timeliness of this. It wasn't a pre-notice, it would be a regular agenda item, so.
Would, would any of my colleagues, is that the okay, may I have concurrence on continuing this item to our next board meeting? Okay, then without objection, we'll just take this on to our next board meeting, and-
7A and B?
Counselee?
September 7th, or the regular?
Uh, the regular meeting, which is, I believe, on the 7th, all right?
We're having, we've added a meeting to your calendar for the 7th.
Oh, that's just budget oriented, though, right?
Yes.
No, then we will take it to the 14th. We'll take it to the, to the 14th before, we will hear that. Before everybody runs away, I apologize, before everybody runs away, I do want to see if there are any members of the public that were here to speak to this item, um, and give them an opportunity to address the board prior to us dismissing y'all. Were there any members of the public that were here to speak to the, the board on this item? Item 7A and B. Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Uh, we then will hear that item on the 14th, and move on to item number nine, Facility Services, Hidden Falls Regional Park Agreement.
Good afternoon, Mark Wright out Facility Services, uh, here, again, with Hidden Falls. Um, it's an item to amend a contract with Carlton Engineering for a design and development support services for Hidden Falls, and we're going to authorize the chairman to execute an amendment increasing the contract amount by $399,950, for a total contract amount not to exceed $790,641. In September 2008, your board approved a professional service agreement with this, with this consultant to provide schematic design that supported the EIR and the CUP process for the 979 acre expansion portion of this park. And then, consistent with the RFP that we've issued for this, it included the detailed design, construction document preparation, and construction support services that we're now faced with. Having gone through the EIR process and received the CUP, we now need to implement construction of this and deliver the facility, hopefully, in 2012. It is a sizable contract amendment, but it includes the design and construction administration for three major bridges. It's an emergency vehicle bridge, pedestrian bridge, each of these are over 100 feet long. It's a sizable undertaking. Additionally, there's work involved in designing the observation deck over the waterfalls and interpretive features throughout the park. Um, as I mentioned, the, uh, EIR and the CUP have been approved, and there's sufficient funding in the contract to administer this part. This is a portion of the project that was always compliment, contemplated, and we're doing the overall project funding analysis. So, in order to proceed with this project, we respectfully request that your staff approve Amendment Number One to the Carlton Engineering contract. May I excuse me for being nervous?
All right. Board members have any questions on, on the item? Seeing none, any members of the public wish to address the board, please step up.
Michael Murphy, 5617, W.R., Rockland, California. Just one question, is this increasing the budget for this item?
Thank you very much. Fair question, is this increasing the budget for this item?
No, it's not. We've been to the board recently for the park dedication fees and other things, and this cost was always contemplated in that overall product amount.
Simply the next step in the authorization of the work product.
Exactly.
Thank you very much. All right, and we have a motion on the item?
Make a report.
We have a motion, Montgomery, second, Holmes, uh, on the Facility Services item regarding Hidden Falls Regional Park Agreement, uh, 12670. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Thank you. We move on to Health and Human Services, Adult System of Care. Saw Mr. Luce here. Oh, there he is. Dr. Burton, how are you, sir?
Good afternoon, Dr. Rich Burton, the Director and Health Officer, Plaster County Health and Human Services. Um, this afternoon, we're here to ask support for the submission of a fraud investigation plan for, in-home supportive services. The plan was developed in conjunction with the District Attorney's Office and has their support as well. In-home supportive services is a program here in Plaster County that serves over 2,000 disabled seniors and adults on, on a daily basis. About 800 individuals in Plaster County are employed in this program, and as a result of the program, these disabled seniors and adults are able to stay in their homes and be self-sufficient, as opposed to needing to live in a skilled nursing facility or something that's frequently four times as expensive as the program, uh, to be able to help them live self-sufficient within their homes. Uh, Program Manager Eldon Luce and I are here to answer any questions. The District Attorney's Office expressed support as recent as last night, uh, in support of this plan being submitted to the state, and be happy to answer any of your questions this morning.
Okay, and just for clarification's sake, you are looking simply for authorization to, uh, submit to the state requesting state funds, uh, for, uh, a fraud investigation effort? Right now, you are not requesting any budget modification, but should we be successful in securing additional state funds for this fraud investigation effort, then you will come back to the board with a request for a budget modification at that time?
That is correct.
Okay. Questions by board members? Any members of the public wish to address the board? Yes, sir, please step up.
Supervisor Rockholm certainly has my number. You knew I was going to step up on this one. In the 1960s, President Lyndon Baines Johnson's great, formed his great society, and unfortunately, he needed to fund that at the same time as he was increasing the funding for the Vietnam War. And that, of course, was, uh, one of the features that caused the Great Recession of 1971, and the government's solution was to print money to resolve that situation. I think President Johnson would have made a great typical supervisor of Plaster County. The only problem is, is that you guys can't print your own money. In 2006, I met with Dr. Burton, Supervisor Wygant, and Rick Saletta over their, these kinds of issues, where they expressed their desire for even more redistribution of the wealth for Health and Human Services. And I warned everybody. I said, you know what, you're at war in Iraq, and you've got a country at war, we're in for a big economic crunch here. Nobody believed me at the time, everything was roaring ahead, and the people were spending money like crazy, and of course, I was right. I usually am about these economic things. And now, I look at the record, I have looked at the record over two years, I came to every single meeting and watched the record of our Health and Human Services, and I was appalled. Now, I may have missed the last supervisor's meeting on that record, maybe some great change had occurred, and I will go back over and look at those, seeing Supervisor Holmes and Montgomery, to see if there really has been some concrete changes. I think the system is dysfunctional, I think it's broken, and I don't think the answer is constantly throwing more money at it. My first book, if I'm going to look over the record, I would hope these supervisors will also look over my book, The Greens, which tells the story of the Auburn Greens, and it is a fictional story, but it's based in the community and things that really happen. This financial calamity that did occur, as I predicted, is at the tip of the tip of the tip of the iceberg of the financial calamity you're about to experience. And yet, you guys are talking about increasing the budget for this situation for these services And you're talking about more than is already budgeted. You don't have the money. Your county's in fiscal trouble. Don't you guys get it? You're about ready to collapse this thing, along with the state of California. You want funds from the state of California? The state of California is more than broke. And I just am appalled to see you guys constantly spending, 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 and I think this is just another example of what I was talking about earlier. And I just want, for the record, for you guys to know, that I have had the discussions, I'd be willing to have them again as often as necessary, to get this thing under control and to make it more efficient, and make sure that there is, if we're not really protecting our citizens, and we're not doing our county's job of really helping these citizens, and I don't think we are, I think we're spending far too much money for far too little gain, and when you talk about the cost- far too much money for far too little gain. And when you talk about the cost of a human life, I'm very aware of these situations. I was spent time homeless for a while. I talked to other homeless people, and I just wanted to respond on that end that if it means that you guys are all going to go bankrupt to go help somebody and save their lives, most of you would not volunteer to do that personally. And there are people that are that way in the private sector that will spend every last dime trying to help people, and I think that's where we need to look to more. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Wiegand, Jim Comer, a question?
I know, I actually want to set the record straight. Michael, appreciate, appreciate you being here. Happy to meet with you again, but I'm not going to let you miscategorize or misrepresent my position or that of staff. If your comments were that it was my intention or desire or staff's to further redistribute the wealth as a result of the meeting that we had a couple of years ago, that's horribly inaccurate misrepresentation of my position and what staff said. Also, you mentioned that we were on the verge of collapse budgetarily here in Placer County. That's also completely inaccurate, and actually, nothing could be farther from the truth. I would defy you actually to find a government budget in the United States that's actually stronger than Placer County's right now. Our budget is difficult, but it's manageable. What we do with our Department of Health and Human Services is undertake many programs that are mandated by the state and federal government. We use the resources that are allocated to us for that, and we do the best job we possibly can with that. And in fact, our program is a model in the country for creating value and running those kinds of programs. So I'd recommend you contact our president or perhaps our congressman or maybe run for one of those offices, but your misrepresentations and your directions here today are completely inappropriate. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Wiegand, second by Supervisor Holmes to approve HHS or authorizing for the submission of the California Department of Social Services funds for fraud investigation. That fairly characterized what it is we're doing. Okay, thank you very much. And so, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. Moving on to Public Works, Hot Mix Asphalt Overlay for the summer of 2010. And we're here in-
Yes, sir.
-the end of August to consider the Hot Mix for the summer of 2010.
Still in the middle of summer. Kevin Taylor, Public Works. And if all goes well, we'll probably be out on Barton and Cavett Stallman this time next week.
Love hearing that. Love hearing that. That's all you have to say. Move forward. Oh, wait, I can't do that.
Okay, well, I'll make this quick. We're asking you to adopt a resolution to award Contract 1097 to Tykert Construction for the summer 2010 Hot Mix Asphalt Overlay in the amount of $1,827,750, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract change orders up to 15% of the contract amount. We're receiving Proposition 1B funds to fund a majority of this project. We also utilize some CSA funds and a one-time in-lug payment from Sutter Auburn Faith Hospital for their solar project. We'll be overlaying approximately 8.7 miles of roadway. We opened bids at the end of last month. Tykert was the low bidder by approximately 17%. So we'll take advantage of continuing good bid prices and get them to work hopefully with your approval as soon as possible. With that-
Members of the board, have any questions of staff? Members of the public have any questions of staff? Seeing none, we will enter a motion.
Move forward.
Motion Rockholm, second Holmes to approve the authorization for Contract Number 1097. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. That concludes the regular agenda. As one modification, if I may, with concurrences with my colleagues, our CEOs informed me that we may very well be adding some items to the agenda of the 7th to make it more of a regular board meeting as opposed to just a budget meeting, and therefore, as chairman, if you don't object, and I deem it appropriate, to place that item on for the 7th as opposed to the 14th. Thank you very much. Okay. Before we adjourn to closed session, council give our little report here.
Thank you. The board will adjourn to closed session, take up the items on page four, Item 12. There is a series of bankruptcy litigations where the county is trying to get back our tax dollars, and one significant potential litigation matter and labor discussions. We will report back later.
All right, thank you very much.